This meeting, uh, June twenty seventh, the order and John can leave us on the.
And we are pleased. I pledge allegiance to the law. And we are standing in the rear. And to the very right for which it stands. One nation under God. And with the.
Hey Linda, when you get back to your desk, we'll.
Hey, Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Silva.
Here.
American.
Here. All right, any reordering of the agenda?
No reordering this evening.
And Linda, you have no public comments?
I do not.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent calendars. It'll be minutes of June thirteenth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. At the treasurer's report, May thirty first, twenty twenty four, resolution number twenty four, twenty, a resolution of the city council, the city of Buellton, California, establishing an appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Resolution number twenty four, twenty one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Buellton, California, setting priorities for filing a written argument regarding a city measure to increase the transient occupancy tax, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. And then resolution number twenty four, twenty two, resolution of the city council, the city of Buellton, California, setting priorities for filing a written argument regarding a city measure to amend the urban growth boundary and directing the city attorney to prepare its impartial analysis. Motion to approve.
Second.
Linda?
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
I was absent last meeting, so I will not.
Just in minutes, right?
Stay.
Just minutes.
Yeah, okay. And, um, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
American.
Hi. And moving on to a sad moment, this will be recognition of retiring city employee Claire Barcelona. And do you have a presentation for this or a proclamation? No, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Claire, would you like to come with the microphone and speak for us?
Try and hold for you in ten and fifteen minutes.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to thank you for my tenure with the city of Buellton. I learned a lot. I met a lot of nice people. I love our community and want to see it keep going forward like it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And I just want to say in the many years that I've known you, you're always on the ball. You, any question that I have, you always had the answer for it. You've done a stellar job for the city and we're really sorry to see you go.
Thank you. But we're excited for you too.
Yeah, congratulations on retirement.
Yeah.
I'd also make.
Don't get busier retired like I did. Uh, and I believe we have a gift here for you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I wanted to thank you for your service as well. And also thank you for your friendship and the hard work you've done. How many years have you worked here? Nineteen years. So and I worked with her. I worked, I worked with thirteen of those, so enjoyed your company and thank you very much.
Yeah. Come on up here. If it's getting you with this, let me get a picture. It took me a while to pick it out. Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Great way to go for nineteen years. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You need to open it now.
There's a lot to this presentation.
They've covered his name for record.
She can open it. You don't have to. I'm just kidding.
Never me, please be brief.
We don't want to mess with that once and.
That's the way to your heart, huh?
Yeah. You were wondering.
There we go. Drum roll.
It's a new iron.
Bobby will like that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And you'll see me around town. I will.
Right?
You have to read it. It's inscribed.
You have to come up to the microphone and read it.
Claire Barcelona, thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Buellton, two thousand and five, two thousand and twenty. Congratulations. Thank you.
We know you like flowers, so.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
What's in them there?
Uh, let us move on to public hearings. Any public hearings?
No, sir, not this evening.
Okay, and then let's move on to council member comments or items. Any council member comments or items?
I do.
You sure?
No, I don't.
I'd say.
Yes, um, I, when we were last in Sacramento, I was talking to a couple of cities about what they were doing to help retain good talent in light of unprecedented inflation. Um, and I talked to the city. I don't remember if maybe Scott or Mr. Silva remembers, but, uh, the city of Moderna, Derna, Dera, they had a program.
Well, she knows after a room.
That was down payment assistance for employees. And I was hoping that, um, we could give staff direction to looking into something like that. Uh, the idea would be that we could look into funding a down payment assistance plan for, uh, Buellton employees. And, um, that could even generate revenue for us because we could put money into the fund that was otherwise sitting in a long-term yield account. Uh, and then when the employee either sold or refinanced their house, they could, uh, pay us back with a greater percentage rate. So if that was something staff or, you know, city council could give direction to staff to potentially look into and how that might happen. I think that would be a great way we could retain good staff and sort of be at the forefront of keeping good people.
Oh, good idea.
I love it, David.
That was my comment. Okay.
Um, I was just gonna re-ask about us looking into technology updating for our council chambers since if you come in here, the TV's over here, so everyone has to angle and the camera's right over there, so people are hard to follow.
We, I've, I've got some ideas. We will, we will bring these some.
I'm just re-presenting the broken recordness that is me, so I'm sorry. I know you know, but I'm just re-saying it.
Okay, we, 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 I'll, I'll move it up a little bit. Did, uh, just before we move on, do we get consensus on, um, Councilmember Hornick's request?
Um, I think you guys can look into it.
Okay.
And then bring it back to, yeah, it's okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, John?
Uh, no, just to comment that we have done that. We actually did that with Scott when he came on board with his house. I think it's a good idea to, everybody needs a little help and.
Yeah.
So we're taking people.
Right, and there there has been some comment about getting an owl?
Yes, I bet, yes.
And we can set it right there in the middle of the desk. So, yeah, we can look into that, maybe here in the near future, so we can do that. I mean, all the cha- other chambers that I go to, they have, you know, cameras up in the corners. I mean,
Right.
least we can do is put an owl in.
Yeah.
Right?
That'll make it easy to fix.
Okay, any written communications?
None this evening.
Okay, committee reports, Lisa?
None.
No, thank you.
David, I attended the three CE meeting in, in Atascadero yesterday. And it was mostly a discussion about restructuring incentives for encouraging customers to move from solar production to solar battery storage. So that was the main point. And they'll be opening an office in San Luis Obispo, so there'll be a greater, um, presence moving further south since they're based in the Monterey-ish area. So that was the main day.
Okay. John?
Um, I, I attended the Aquatics Foundation Workshop with Dave uh, on Wednesday, yesterday. And then, uh, on Monday, I had a sustainable water meeting, which was really good. And today we had, um, CCWA meeting, which was, uh, we, uh, we retired, uh, one of the head guys has, has left John, is it John Brady? Who's, uh, retired today?
Yes.
Yeah, so he's, and he's been with the, um, CCWA for a long time and it was his last day of the day. And we have someone new coming on board. Yes, I'm not sure, isn't he? Anyway, uh, we had a good meeting today. So those are three boards I attended.
And I was at the same aquatics meeting. Uh, we're moving forward with that. We're getting into the phase where, um, we're starting getting some fundraising going. Hopefully get the funding for that pool to go in, so the kids can play league games and CIF games in an Olympic-sized pool. Um, that's gonna be a huge benefit here. Uh, I don't know if any of you have known about what the project is and going on, the the existing pool is basically going to become a community pool. Um, you know, a lot of people don't like to swim inside for one, the YMCA, there's a lot of people swimming in those pools, people have to wait. So this is gonna be an addition to that. And then the kids will basically use the Olympic pool for, uh, competition. What's that?
Where is the current pool?
Uh, it is in storage containers, uh, three storage containers. We bought that pool about seven years ago, John? It was about seven years ago. It was brought here from Nebraska. Uh, it was trucked out here. Um, there was a lot of talk about getting this thing in. Uh, unfortunately, the school boards changed, you know, we had to go through the MOU process and then COVID hit, so that kind of delayed it again. So now we're, uh, uh, full steam ahead and trying to get some, um, funding to get the pool put into the ground. Um, I also went to a North County meeting and, um, uh, C, uh, SB CAG meeting, sorry. Uh, and once again, we just talked about traffic. That's what we do. Uh, okay, let us move on.
We update on the one fifty four.
Um, the one fifty four project. Caltrans has basically expedited that. Uh, it is at, um, is it Zaca? No, it's, um, it's a road. Not San Antonio Creek. They're trying to put a roundabout at, what's the one that goes up to the dump? That is, um, Boxer Canyon. There you go. Boxer Canyon. So they want to put a roundabout there, kind of slow the traffic down. Um, Mike Becker was one of the guys that I talked to quite a while ago. He said, the reason that a lot of people get routed over the one fifty four is because it's technically faster to go over the one fifty four. It's eight miles shorter. Uh, if they get the speed slowed down on the one fifty four enough, then your GPS will not route you onto the one fifty four. So people will just continue up the one oh one. Kind of one of the things we want to do, a lot of traffic there, there's a lot of speed that goes through that stretch. Uh, slow people down there. And then if your GPS recognizes that it's slower to take the pass, then everybody will bypass it hopefully. Uh, especially the big trucks. Uh, okay, let us, anybody else? Anything? Nope. Okay, let us move on to business items. Uh, and number seven will be presentation on the San Ynez Valley Botanical Garden.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. It's up a little bit. I feel like we haven't been here forever with COVID and everything else, so, um, I just was hoping that I could say, take all my minutes that I've saved up over the last couple of years and use them tonight. Um, and we do have a short video after this. So, um, my name is, um, Puck Erickson. I've been with the garden, um, since its inception. And that was about, um, almost twenty years ago now, when I was a kid. Um, I have one word for you, incubator. An incubator is a place that provides a supportive environment for the development of new ideas and concepts to bring them to fruition. The Botanic Garden in the city of Buellton exemplify the definition of incubator. Almost twenty years ago, an idea emerged for a Botanic Garden adjacent to Riverview Park. Not only to meet the mitigation measures required for the new park, but to create a habitat that will allow our human community to flourish along with our native flora and fauna. We had a choice at that time, um, to hire professionals, raise a bunch of money and install a garden. Or we could work with the city to design the bones of a garden and engage the community in a hands-on approach to growing a garden. We chose the latter. We want to thank you tonight for believing in us when we just had the spoils of soil and not a tree in sight. From the first efforts by volunteers donating and planting seventy-three trees, the garden not only grew but developed as a microclimate for a variety of regional plant communities and the activities of a community finding common ground. For a bit of data, we now have over eighty trees in the garden. If the original trees were to be purchased today at their current size, they would be valued at over twenty thousand dollars per tree or one million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is based on several purchases made by our firm, Arcadia Studio, in the last two weeks. The Garden's Tree Collection is also a huge contributor to the city's efforts to manage climate change. Without going into the weeds, literally, trees are great absorbers of carbon dioxide and vessels for carbon storage. Based on current data, in the first twenty years of growth, the average tree absorbs twenty-two pounds of carbon per year. So in the lifetime of the garden to date, the trees have removed and stored over seventeen tons from, of carbon from Buellton's atmosphere. In the last ten years, the trees have grown and we now have a wide range of microclimates that support literally over a couple thousand plants, including annuals and endangered shrubs. Carol Bornstein, a world-renowned horticulturalist, recently toured the garden with me and applauded our inclusion of two of the rarer varieties of Toyon and a yellow hummingbird sage that she introduced to the trade at the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden. The garden has now become a regional resource for horticultural and environmental education. As the plants grew, so did our community. We have witnessed in real time the results of a study by the National Institutes of Health, which documents engaging with natural environments stimulates curiosity, flexibility, and imagination. And I quote from the study, "The most important influence of the natural environment on creativity is the creative idea stage, which they call the incubation period, including getting inspiration and problem solving. Nature beneficially enhances creativity, new ideas, and flexible thinking while improving our intention to analyze and further develop ideas. During the creative incubation period, nature walks foster calmness, spiritual rejuvenation, and provide opportunities to rest and review problematic issues in a new light. So we invite you all to take a walk in the garden if you're ever stuck with, um, thorny city policy issues. As one of the first participants, um, in the city, in public-private partnership, we have also served as a role model for other groups. We are excited to see the first crops planted in the new community garden in an idea that was shared with many while we clipped and weeded. And also, the garden has continued to be an incubator, generating other ideas like art in the garden where, um, a local, uh, group of teenage artists came and developed the stone mosaics that you see today that are regular stopping places for many families. Um, since its inception, we built fairy, fairy houses. And a group of interested parents soon emerged that shared our belief in the importance of children's engagement with the natural environment. From the emergence of the first fairy gardens, we are excited to see the plans for the new Children's Museum, which we are sure will be another outstanding resource for the community. And, um, so we know that many other ideas, um, I don't know if you're familiar with the Little Village Foundation, but it's a wonderful, um, music nonprofit that was started by a local citizen, Jim Hugh, while, and he got the idea while he volunteered to build our secondary trail. And they now just won some major awards, uh, back in Memphis at the National Blues Awards Festival. And they have since, since he started it, um, fifteen years ago, the, the, um, Little Village Foundation has, um, produced twenty-five records for, uh, musicians, uh, who are underserved in the music community. So, um, one of the things that is a bit of a challenge for us are metrics. And to get grants and, uh, funding, the first question that's in the little box is, you know, how many people visit the garden, um, every day? And we don't really have a way of counting that because the garden is open from dawn to dusk, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But we think on average, we have about a hundred people a day that come and walk their dogs and, and the kids programs and things like that. So on our wish list, which we'll share hopefully at another meeting in the future, is getting a counter at the bridge. And, um, Derek, our board chair, has been working with a local IT guy on how we can actually do that. And our biggest challenge is to do it reliably, um, we need to have power. So we've just met, had a great meeting with Rose and, um, we'll, we'll inform you on our progress on that. And, um, so I just want to end by saying that incubation creates collaboration. Just to highlight some of the garden's partners in education, community building, and youth programs. We've worked with Nature Track, the YMCA, local public and private schools, the Valley Rotary Clubs, churches, art groups, the County of Santa Barbara's, um, different departments like social services, um, meet in the garden, the four H, and we just, um, were contacted by the Master Gardeners Program, which is a statewide program. And they want to teach classes in the garden. So we're really excited about that. And we want to continue our outreach with, and collaboration efforts focused on the, um, environmental education for the youth in our region. And we also, of course, continue to work with the Chumash because they are such great contributors in terms of ethnobotany and the use of native plants for medicines. So just like the city itself, the garden has grown up along with all of you. We are committed to an enduring relationship and presence in our community. As demands and needs change over the years, like our plants, we will adapt, share, and communicate. We look forward to continuing to build on our great working relationship now and in the future. I wanted to end by sharing this thought from a nineteenth-century Japanese scholar. A garden is a friend you can visit anytime. So we are humbled that so many have discovered this to be true at the San Ynez Valley Botanic Garden. And before we show the video, um, I don't know if you were aware of this, but April was Native Plant Month. And we were recognized along with the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, which was like, whoa. Standing up there with Dave, David Windiger, um, to get a proclamation recognizing our contributions to, um, the, uh, community education in native plants. So thank you very much. And we, um, are really excited about sort of re-infiguring our, our communications with the city. So hopefully the video will work.
I hope so too.
Oh, I just have one other little number I forgot to share, which Derek will say, you forgot to share. Um, of course, Holiday Lights just started two years ago. And it has become something, I think, really special. And in twenty twenty-two, we had five thousand four hundred and forty people attend Holiday Lights. Last year, we had seven thousand, three hundred and fifteen. And most of the work was done primarily by volunteers. So this is also a word to put out to all of your friends that we are now looking for volunteers for the twenty twenty-four Holiday Lights.
Thank you so. Thank you, Puck.
Oops, hold on a minute. Just a second here. Let me share this so they can see it. My internet is terrible. I can't get the agenda.
Is the wild fight down?
Yeah, you guys got it.
Okay. That's there it is.
No, the packet. I'm sorry, packet.
And. So the desk.
So this.
Awesome.
Well, anytime you want to share that, I went in here like SP magnetings. Feel free.
Okay. Is that available online?
Um. Uh, it will be. Uh, you also have it on thumb drive and I can share it with anybody that wants it.
That's awesome.
Who needs it?
Yeah.
Did we made that entirely locally? Was that volunteer?
It was paid, but uh it was a local artist that did it.
That's awesome.
It's awesome.
We go there all the time and love it. So cool. Everything about it is cool. Kids, kids just, I want to make a wish. I want to make a wish. I want to fly them out like on the little plane.
Right.
It's great.
Uh, and I just, go ahead, Buck.
Oh, we we hope someday to do a little book of. Some of the tags from the wishing tree.
Yeah.
Cause it's really quite unbelievable.
Yeah.
I mean, all the chaos and political stuff. Really, we we get so few little nasty brands. It's and we um because you think, well. But yeah, some of them are just real heartbreakers. It's a very special place for people.
And I just want to say, Puck, that I really appreciate everybody that goes out there and gives their time. On this effort, you know, and I have voted several times. To help fund this um endeavor and it's it's always a pleasure and my grandkids are now going through this. And the the Light Festival, it just blows my mind. It's spectacular, you know, all the effort that people put into. How many people does that take to put that together?
It's just me and Eva basically and Debbie.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Wow. Wow.
Anybody that wants to help is welcome.
The whole thing, but for the number of volunteers that we really need. For, you know, when we're doing the handson stuff.
Yeah.
What would you say?
Oh, I don't know.
Maybe.
A lot.
Minimum thirty, yeah.
We have to honor that. That's incredible.
But yeah, just the committee that does it is like myself, Eva and Debbie. And we work with Andreas uh of Inwago.
Yeah, right.
Well, good job.
Wants to help.
Right? And and I remember when that was just a piece of dirt, you know, and we voted to to make that into the Botanic Gardens and it's just, it's honestly as blossom like. You know, no pun intended, but it has blossomed into what it is, you know, I mean, some of the structures and things you have put in there. In the last few years, I mean, the kids just love going out there and playing, so it's it's awesome. I appreciate appreciate your effort.
You know, with just dirt and the little arbor that we have. That the vines are growing up on sort of near the entry. You know, somebody just showed up with that one day.
Yeah.
And we said, yeah, we could probably use that.
Yeah.
You know, somebody else showed up with something else and. And like an artist just wanted to do those beautiful butterfly wings and. And so it's been a place. That allows people to really kind of reach out and. And not be scared to create things and share them and. And I just watched like junior high boys. Who were, you know, kind of a piece of work, were. Were shoveling away and all of a sudden they realized the kid next to them was autistic. And maybe in a school environment, they would have bullied that kid. But in the garden, they're working together, which.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Is. We should just create more gardens.
Right.
But anyway, thank you and we really appreciate your ongoing support and. Derek and I just, when was that? Last summer, I guess. Did a um along with a couple other people, we took the Santa Barbara Foundation Board Training Workshop. Because we feel like we're. The garden is sort of going going through an awkward adolescence where we're. We were all just happy digging in the ground and now we have to actually. People look at us as an ongoing permanent resource and. And want programs. I mean, every day Derek gets calls about. Can this school come? Can that school come? And we have to figure out a way to fund. Um administrator. Who can actually manage these things because. You know, we're we're not going to get emails after ten o'clock at night to school principals, so. Anyway.
It's awesome.
That's our next next step that we're figuring out. So thank you and um thanks for letting us take so much time. I'm glad you have a short agenda today.
And I'm going to digress a little bit here and um. I've been approached about having a a tree planting program here in Bulton of um getting some funding, uh maybe some grants, have some donations from people here in the community. And try to plant about a thousand trees in the next few, you know, probably six months. Maybe eight months. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a little difficult. I'm like, let's cut on that. It's it's just going to put more work on his plate, but you know. I think uh there's a lot of places like Avenue Flags where we could put a lot of trees and so. Uh, I'm going to get with him and we're going to collaborate on that, see if we can get that done. Okay. All right, and with that, let us move on to uh number eight, and this is going to be going to be. Um, thanks for coming in. Thank you guys for coming in.
Excellent.
Um, uh, Ward of Contract for a Classification and Compensation Study. And the lead on this is going to be HR Director Linda Reed.
Great, thank you.
One of her many hats.
Thank you, Mayor King and Council. During last year's budget negotiations, the council approved funding for a class and comp study. And in April of this year, uh, we solicited proposals from qualified consultants. To conduct a comprehensive class and comp study. The city's last compensation study was conducted in-house in February of two thousand nineteen. Uh, staff received two proposals by May twenty third of this year. And after careful review, we went with HR Dynamics. To do the class and comp study. Uh, they will review and revise current job descriptions. And then use the revised data to prepare to prepare an accurate uh compensation comparison. The task, the tasks to uh complete the class and comp study are listed in your staff report. The final work product will include a classification report. With new job descriptions and a compensation report, including comparison figures. From neighboring cities for each of the twenty job classifications. The consultant will also present the findings and recommendations to the council in the fall. Staff originally budgeted sixty thousand dollars for the class and comp study. And the total proposal cost came in at forty five thousand eight hundred and seventy. Staff recommends that the council award the contract for the class and comp study in the amount of forty five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars to HR Dynamics. And Performance Management and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. That concludes staff's report and we are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am. I will bring it back to the council for any questions of staff.
No questions.
David?
Nope.
John?
No questions.
All right, uh, I will open it up for public comment. Do we have a public comment?
We do not.
Okay, then I will close that, bring it back to council for further discussion or possible motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second Linda.
Hey. Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, and we will move on to number nine. This will be discussion of proposed public safety radio tower at fire station number thirty one. And the lead on this is going to be City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Some of you have heard me mention this issue before, about the first of the year, plus or minus uh several weeks. Uh, I became aware of a proposal uh coming, working its way through the county to uh install a uh communications tower. At Fire Station Thirty One. The tower itself, yes, right, right behind us here. Tower itself is to be a part of a new county public safety communication system. That's intended to allow for uh public safety first responder uh communication countywide. Uh regardless of of the location of uh the people using it. What um struck me as being important for the city to weigh in on this project about is the the proposed size of this tower. Um, the the original size that was proposed to us uh was one of of ninety feet in height. Which is considerably taller than anything we have here in the city and would be visible. Given our relatively flat terrain at the bottom of the valley here uh for quite a distance. Um, the county has proposed to um. Camouflage the tower in the form of a of a water tower. I'm sure you've seen some of the water, the old style looking water tanks along the freeway. Or the highway leading up towards Santa Maria through Orchid and the like. Um, a a number of those contain um telecommunications facilities, be they cellular antennas or or um. Uh, facilities such as the one we're discussing here. Um, I think it's it's a rather effective way of camouflaging. However, again, the size required for this would look tremendously out of scale within the city. In meeting with um representatives from the fire department and the county's consultant, uh Mr. Zahid Masood, who's here this evening. Uh, I had uh expressed to them my concerns uh from a staff level as to the uh possible aesthetic impact of a facility such as this to the city. And asked if there were anything that can be done. Uh, they were uh very accommodating in terms of uh researching different alternatives. I gave them a number of alternative sites. Uh, of those, only one of the alternative sites um. Uh, that that I was able to give them was viable. That was the uh uh the Polo Ranch up here just uh north of the Litch Townhomes. Um, the Polo Ranch um ownership was open to the placement of a facility up there, given the the elevation of the ranch, it would not have required a large tower. Uh, however, the a- as a piece of private property, the uh. The owner of that property had terms of his own. The the terms included a monthly rent or excuse me, annual rent of about thirty six thousand dollars per year. And moving the facility up there would require some additional um engineering costs on the part of the county to the tune of about fifty thousand dollars. We were uh, Mr. Masood reached out to me again and informed me that this was a viable option, but that the county was not able to pay for this and. That um if the city were willing to pick up the costs, they would be happy to move forward in that location. Alternatively, if the city were to um. If if they were to build a facility here at the fire station. They determined that they could, without tremendously um impacting the effectiveness of the of the system they're setting up. Reduce the tower height here at the fire station to sixty five feet, which is um. A considerable improvement over ninety, but from an aesthetic standpoint, still out of scale with the rest of the the community. Um, this is a very important aspect to the the county's public uh safety system. Um, I I I'm not. Here before you suggesting that we need to derail the 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 system in in order to maintain um some sort of an aesthetic here within the city. However, I did feel it was necessary to bring this to the city council. And ask you to weigh in on it so that if there was some message that was uh wanting to be sent the county uh from the council. Uh, we could effect uh effectively bring that message to the county before the board of supervisors is to make a decision on this. So again, uh, Mr. Masood is here as well as Chris Churwin, the county CIO, uh, director of the uh county's IT department. Um, it it is uh his department that is overseeing uh this communication system rather than the sheriff's department or the fire department, so. I'm going to um. Turn it over to these two and they have a a short presentation they can give and then. Uh, we'll all be happy to answer any questions the council may have and you can give us direction as you see fit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Masood?
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Zahid Masood. Uh, I am the project manager for the public safety. Reading network upgrade for the county of Santa Barbara. I'm an outside consultant. Hired by the county to work on this project. I have been working on this project for about seven years. It's a. It's a pretty extensive project throughout the county. And uh it has taken a lot of planning. Uh, planning for funding, planning to pick a vendor and it has gone through different phases, so. We are in the implementation phase right now and the part of the implementation phase requires sites. So uh if you can go to the maybe uh next one, please. Uh, so. Countywide, the system right now that kind of uses for uh public safety, which is primarily, you know, your fire. And your uh Sheriff Department and a lot of the other county uh departments like Animal Services. They use the Public Safety Reading Network, which is a private network licensed by the FCC. It's thirty plus years old, so it's an older system. It's not as reliable and it lacks coverage in certain areas. So the county did a study to improve the coverage and liability in the system. Uh, and decided to basically put a lot of money and effort into improving that, so. Really, the the effort is to improve the public safety for the citizens of the county. As well as the first response manner, the fire uh staff and the sheriff's staff and so forth. So the I think that's what we're trying to do from the county perspective. Um, uh, so really, when we look at the system from a technical jargon, we have what is called a microwave. Uh, system which is point to point connectivity. Uh, so we're thinking about a a point uh connection from here from uh Bulton to San Ynez. So county already has a San Ynez tower that has been upgraded already, so there'll be point to point connection for microwave. So that's one of the connections that we're talking about right here in Bulton. And the second one would be for the fire uh communication, which is called a land mobile radio. So these are the ready you see in the in the fire trucks and then the and the uh the uh the uh. The fire staff that uses on a day to day basis. Uh, so that will be uh another set of antennas that will go to the tower, so all of that technology is being upgraded throughout the county. But for Bulton, I'll share with you the uh the uh topology of the area, so to speak, where the improved coverage will be. So this is the county map. You can see the county is pretty large. It's actually third, fourth largest in terms of geographical area. You can see most of the county, uh, almost half of the county is lost, Badris National Forest. So it's a lot of empty area and we try to cover some of the area. So you can see some of the coverage of the north of the map, Guiana Valley, say for example, we're trying to improve the coverage there. There's not as much coverage right now. The county is building a tower there uh to cover that area as well. And then you can see right in the middle, the yellow is the Bulton area, so we want to improve the coverage in this area as well. The county has towers right now, say for example, Chumash Casino to provide the fire related services, but the it does not cover the. The desired area that the county has for this area. So if you go to the next one, please. So this is a uh, you can see the red lines. You probably won't be able to see too much, but. The red line is the focused area that we're trying to improve coverage. Uh, for, so you're looking at solving San Ynez Valley, you're looking at Bulton area. So the idea is that we want to improve specifically the fire coverage in this area. So these these red lines that you're seeing is about ninety three percent coverage improvement. We're doing total ninety percent coverage, as you said. So there'll be much more coverage compared to what we have today for fire coverage specifically. Okay, so that's what we're trying to do from an improvement perspective here, coverage. Uh, go ahead, please. Alright, so this is just the technical information. What happens when you turn and build a tower, when you turn and have a propagation study is done. Uh, we hire uh uh specialized consultants with degrees of engineering, basically. And they do a path analysis and they do a coverage analysis to see what is effective in terms of coverage and point to point connectivity. So this just shows the where the antennas might go, so. The the discussion that we had with Mr. Wolf was basically. That we need a ninety foot tower because the study showed that eighty seven foot uh height level would be one of the antennas that will go on. And that's the reason we proposed a ninety foot tower uh in this area. So these are the studies that were done by a third party to to make sure we can have coverage and point to point connectivity. Um, go ahead, please. Okay, so this is just an example of it. Uh, I think the. We have not picked a specific tower type, so to speak. We're just sharing with you what it might be. So it could be a square tower, water tower, it could be a round tower. And we can have discussions when we're trying to pick a tower, basically what it should look like. And this is just an example of it uh from aesthetic perspective.
Scale wise, how high is that tower?
I'm sorry?
Scale wise there, how high is that tower?
Um, I don't know how high this is. This is a sample diagram, so this is probably roughly, I would say it's about maybe sixty foot tower. Yeah, you're looking at the building, building is about maybe about forty to forty five, but and then this is a little bit higher than that, so it's about sixty, sixty five. Um, so this is the area of Fire Station Thirty One. So this is the area of Fire Station Thirty One, I I don't think I have to go over the area, you already know uh what we're looking at. It's behind the Fire Station Thirty One, basically, it's in the corner. Um the back street is the Zaka Street, basically, that's what you're looking at, we have done the studies from a coverage perspective. Uh I think um we don't have any issues with that, uh it's the county property. Uh we have power there, we have um fiber there. And uh we have also the space to put the tower there, so we have spoken with the fire chief at this given time, he's okay putting the tower there. You just want to make sure that the city council here is okay as well, so this is just the diagram, we did a lease exhibit, that's what it's called. Uh to show uh the 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 tower and of course, there's going to be shelter, shelter meaning basically a little um. Uh box where the equipment is going to go, that's what the the terminology is in terms of equipment. And uh the generators are already there, power is already there, so I think it's the facility itself is 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 most of the equipment is already there. Uh to power it, so to speak, so I think that's the reason we chose it, we did look at some of their sites as. Mr. Wolf uh suggested, but they were not feasible, so this is from our point of view is the best site uh to put the tower in, go ahead, please. So um the so if we move the tower to the the site that Mr. Wolf suggested on on the hill, it's doable. Uh I have spoken with the site owner, Joel Baker, I believe, is the name of the gentleman?
Joel Baker.
Baker, yeah, and uh he's willing to do that, we did some site surveys initially. Uh it looks like we do have a path connectivity from that site to San Inez Mountain. Uh so from a path connector, it will work, uh but there's some cost involved, we're estimating right now rough. Uh or of magnitude of about fifty thousand dollars for engineering service. But what when you look at the site, you have to basically do a paths uh analysis, you have to do a geotech survey analysis, all those type of things. Uh they they cost money, so I think we're estimating right now about fifty thousand dollars for that. And then there's a site lease, uh it's a verbal agreement, uh by the time we get to to the site uh lease, it may. Go down, may go up, so just want to make sure it's a rough order of magnitude from the cost perspective. And then uh the the power requirement, I think we'll have figured it out in terms of fiber and the electricity. How to get to the top of the area that that we're looking at, so there's a cost involved from from the county perspective, and I think that's probably saying. Uh that the the county would uh uh is not in a position to absorb that cost. And then uh we ask the city if if they want to move it, then that will be the cost that uh that that would have to be addressed. Uh as Mr. Wolf mentioned, that we uh we we could reduce the size of the tower from ninety to sixty five foot if we stay in the same place. Uh and uh that would mitigate the height of ninety foot tower that we uh we initially had. And that really uh uh the design from ninety to uh sixty five is really affects the what we call the hand mobile radios, say for example. So when you it's push to talk radio, so that radio that fire staff uses, basically. Uh that needs to communicate with the antenna, right? Uh so the the technical studies came back and they said that if you reduce it, it still will work in the area, geographical area, and the coverage is still will be good. The the entire matrix that I showed you before, it has a point to point, they're sitting at forty foot. Level, basically, so that goes to San Inez, I think that needs to remain the same, that's the reason for for the uh the sixty five foot tower, so to speak. So this is the background, I think from our perspective, uh we're we're here to answer any question that you may have, what else we might be doing. But it's really from from the county perspective, uh the 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 county departments have been waiting. Especially fire folks, been waiting for a long time to improve the coverage in this area, and this is our budget to improve that, so that's where we are.
Chris, you want to add anything?
You covered it very well, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
All right, thank you, sir. I I do have a couple of questions for you, if you want to come up to the microphone. Now, this is, it's high frequency, right? This is high frequency, that's why you need a line of sight, okay, the. The tower that they showed us, would would these, would these antennas be external on these towers? So you built something like that and then you would put an antenna array on the exterior of that, or would this be like fiberglass where it could transmit through it? I guess my question.
External antennas.
External antennas, okay, so.
There are three, I'm sorry, there are three antennas. Uh one is for the radios, when you have radio communication, so basically when you open up the push to talk pad, it's going to talk to one of the antennas, so there's a transmit antenna. There's a receiving antenna, they're called the VHF uh antennas, uh that's for.
Right, very high frequency, right.
Because the third antenna is a microwave antenna, which is not that big of an antenna, it's about maybe four feet. Give and take, uh in terms of size, so it's not a big antenna, that's point to point.
Right, but those would basically be, if you did something like this, that would be aesthetically better than just a tower.
Yes.
Uh you would still have to mount those in on the exterior of this.
That is correct.
Okay. The fifty thousand dollars, that's in addition to your existing construction costs of this, you've already factored all that in, right?
The the construction cost for the tower, the county will pay for that.
Right.
But these are engineering costs, basically, that you're looking at for fifty thousand dollars to do a geotech survey, as an example, to make sure the soil is good and all that. So they these are uh engineering and architectural studies, basically.
Okay, so that 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 fifty thousand dollars then would just be a a a study in that particular Joel Baker's property relocation.
Correct.
Uh Sequa, blah, 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 to the county, okay. Uh and 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 the county cannot, are you expecting the city of Bilton to pick up that thirty six thousand?
Yes.
Annual fee as well, correct?
And the fifty thousand.
And the fifty thousand, okay. Okay.
And and there is electrical cost of which we don't know what might be from EGA or fiber cost, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
What is the diminished capacity, if any, from going from the ninety to the sixty five foot? Is it still going to work as it's, you know, designed?
Yeah, so the the vendor uh is pro- um we have in the contract that they have to provide the red line area that I I shared with you in one of the uh. Uh diagrams, uh they have to provide ninety three point seven one percent coverage in that area. So they have indicated they will still provide the coverage, so it it does not diminish that. So these tower, these uh the VHF antennas, the uh high frequency antennas that you're saying. Uh they're basically omnidirectional and they are vertical in terms of height, and they're skinny, they're not one of those monstrous dishes that you see. So from aesthetic perspective, you look at that, uh it's not going to look really, you won't be able to see that, because the VHF antennas are very skinny. Uh and they're really noticeable from distance. The dish that we we're talking about, the micro dish that's going to go to the um San Inez, that 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 would be because, but that would be only for one area, because it's point to point.
So you're saying that the the it would be like a crosshatched uh steel tower, right? If you're putting, if you're just put a tower up rather than something like what you showed us.
Yeah.
So if you just said you wanted something and get it up sixty five feet and you had a steel tower.
Yeah.
Um now you also have to have guy wires with that as well, right?
No.
So it'll stand alone.
It's standable.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Um is this, so that's county property?
It is county property.
And we're saying, okay, we could, and so it's possible we could even eminent domain this private property and not have to pay rent forever?
No, no, the um the the property that we're talking about, the Polo Ranch, is outside the city limits. We we would not be able to do that.
Okay, uh and so it's, we're we're talking about, this is right here, this is right there, I mean, can we see exactly where it's going to go? Is it down the back lot, the corner lot, or is it more, it says, the report says right next to the.
On the other side of the senior center building from here.
So we just walk down this aisle and we see.
Yeah, it's it's an empty space right now.
We got hose hangers there now, right?
Hose hangers on the other side, you're right.
So you guys don't have.
On the antenna.
I'm sorry?
We hang hoses on the antenna.
Well, they they do exercises and all that, so I don't know.
You guys don't have like a sample like water tower with the antenna hanging out, especially if we can see, do you?
I I I don't at this given time, yeah, I I think sometimes you don't see that, these water tower type of things are off the freeways sometimes.
Yeah.
And they they a lot of the communities disguise them with uh uh signs, you know what I'm saying? Uh I I've seen that maybe close to the malls, say for example, so they'll have, you know, malls, you know, uh signs and things like that, so you. Unless you see it closely, you you won't be able to see that.
Would E.F. Johnson be able to give us some sample photos? Uh we can share.
I I can try, yeah.
That might be helpful.
Yeah.
Just just really quickly, yes, um there there's been a lot of talk about the water towers, my question is. Um and and the mayor kind of touched on it here with the question of just a standalone tower. Is there some leeway to discuss other potential forms of camouflage, uh trees, the bear tower, some something else that, I mean, maybe even constructing. Uh you know, a new hose hanger, climbing tower that for the fire station that we could put the antennas on.
Yeah.
Just looking at different alternatives, I'm more concerned if we're looking at it this from an aesthetic standpoint, that you find something that's not only to scale with the community. But that fits in, uh we don't have another water tower in town here, so maybe there's another type that would fit in better.
Yeah, we can, we can, so the trees won't fit, because trees normally is like a monopole type.
Right.
Which is not good for the uh safety of the staff to work on towers and all that, so that's, uh we will not suggest that, maybe we look at that piece of it. But I think we're open to that, if there's something in the marketplace that, because these are all specialized bills, it's all custom built, basically, right? So the easiest thing is to just have a tower, as you mentioned, right? Um and because these other towers cost more money from 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 a cost perspective, but we'll be open to looking at if there, there's some other options available. But trees are not good.
Okay, I I'm I'm just suggesting that because it's it's entirely possible that if we're dealing with a sixty five foot tower. Just the open lattice work tower you were discussing a minute ago, Mr. Mayor, might be less intrusive than the water tower itself. And so we we it may be beneficial to go that direction, but we won't know until we get some mockups of that, so.
Right, it it may not even be that noticeable.
Oh, I just, one other question I had was, are there any health related concerns you have about high frequency beaming a lot of waves around?
No, no, and I'll I'll share with you why, I'm I'm not, you know, a scientist or something like that. The microwave that that we were talking about, that's point to point, unless you're sitting right in the middle of the microwave link. Yeah, then you can have some health issues, but you know, this is going to be going from forty foot, say for example, all the way to the top of the San Inez Mountain Tower. So really, it's it's an air travel, so there's no health issue there, it's point to point laser, if you want to call that.
Right.
The other two antennas are transmit and receive, and uh they only become active, they, I know, they they're only directional in terms of distribution of of waves. Uh they're just like radio traffic, you have a AM radio, FM radio, you have all the time, you have your own cell phones. Actually, these are more active, I have a antenna built in, it used to be in the old days, you had the antenna out, right? In the case of public safety radios, the the antenna only becomes active both ways, I'm talking about the uh tower or or the radio. When you push to talk, at that given time, the radio, the public safety radio, the portable radio will send a signal to the tower, say, hey, I am here. Okay, and then establish a connection, basically, so really. Anytime either fire person or 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 sheriff's staff person, you know, they push a button or something like that, then the tower will be transferred. Downward towards that vehicle or person or something like that. So really, the the waves, so to speak, you know, they're not constantly hitting anybody, it's just like radio wave, you turn on the radio, you get the signal. Same thing with the with the portable radios.
All right, I just want to be sure, like, that there's a lot of speculation, there's a lot of doubt in the public's mind about even. Four G LTE coverage and whatever, so no, we're not talking about that.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we're talking about putting high frequency radio antennas in downtown and what, in our little area surrounded by a community, people are going to ask questions about that.
Yeah, yeah, it it so these are licensed by FCC, so we have to register with the FCC. Uh and um we have submitted all the documentation and so forth, that studies to them as well. Uh and uh they will not approve it if it's basically if it's not uh safe, so from from their part.
John?
Is our water reservoir mountain over there not uh in consideration?
I I suggested that as an alternative site, but it lacks um it lacks a fiber uh fiber optic connection to it.
We didn't have a problem with getting our antenna up there because of the same reason.
And it lacks and it lacks power, and so what's going on with the AT&amp;T antenna is they're looking at alternative ways to get power up there. They don't need the fiber optic connection up there because their back hall is microwave to another station. So whereas this one has to have the back hall coming directly from the base of the tower here, so.
But wouldn't that kill two birds?
I tried, but but the site's just not suitable because there's there's not. A power for it and B, there's not fiber up to the site to get it, and we have an easement for access for the purpose of. Maintaining and operating a water reservoir, but we don't have an easement to run power and and fiber up there.
And that would probably be very cost prohibitive.
Is there, there's a tower at the High Patrol, isn't there? It is, how high is that?
I don't know how. I believe there is, I live here in Bilton.
Yeah.
Um and I walk by there all the time, so they have a tower, but I don't know the height.
So the and and right next door to that, there's a fifty foot uh flagpole, so I think the sixty five foot is pretty unintrusive.
Right.
Visually, you know, it's like if you go looking for the fifty foot flagpoles out here. I don't see where that's.
Yeah, I if I may, I and I I I drove around several times, just just to make sure, I there are a lot of trees there, about fifty five, sixty foot, so I think it'll probably make. Static perspective, I think it'll fit in, you know, if you want to just have a four legged tower, three legged tower, I think I think we could work on that. If you don't have a lot of tower, that's fine, I can I can work with you, uh it comes up the design.
I I kind of like the water tower too, but I mean, I think yourself, Wolf.
David? Um couple of questions, one was, is there any expected light or sound pollution with any of these towers for the neighbors? Is that, I don't know, do you need to do lighting through this at all, nothing like that, so?
Blinking light on?
Nothing. Great.
No, 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 I mean, we'll have, we'll have uh uh some uh. Uh lightning protection or something like that, but uh we don't need to have it lit up for aviation or something like that.
I think it'd have to be taller than that.
And then the only other one was that, I know that this, our town often complains about um overall, just like. Personal residential coverage from telecommunications issues. I'm assuming that these types of towers have an exclusivity that you wouldn't be able, this would.
We could not.
We would preclude from anything like that, but. Nothing could be added on to incentivize it to make the residents, like they got, I mean, beyond better public safety, which is a good benefit, but wait, that's, okay, just wanted to make sure that we were saying we had asked.
Yeah, it'll be just for the current use, for the, right now, all we're forecasting is for the fire district to use the uh VHF antennas, that's the type of antennas. Transmit, receive, two antennas there, and the microwave link to the San Inez Mountain. You mentioned about the uh highway patrol, normally, they they don't allow any other devices on their towers as well, so.
No, those are stayed on.
You know what I'm saying, so.
I didn't mean to use, I was thinking there's already a tower, I don't know how high it is, but it seems like there's a tower.
Another question, if that's okay.
No more?
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Masood, you mentioned that we've got three towers, transmit and receive for VHF and the microwave uh point to point antenna. The the matrix you gave me here has two additional ones for VHS channel six, is that now not in consideration with the sixty five?
That is, so that's a backup antenna, that's not going to be as 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 uh as normal antenna, so the reason for the VHF six channel is that if. All um everything fails, okay, we don't have a microwave back hall, we don't have the regular uh uh VHF traffic. And it's like a safety thing, okay, earthquake happens, something, whatever disaster happens, and people need to communicate, basically, so that little antenna that we're talking about. So that can then just communicate locally here to power our services, so that's just a backup.
Okay, but you mentioned when we talked about the tower that there would only be three antennas up there.
Yeah.
But we would need the 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 six channels on top of that as well.
We we would.
Okay, so there would there would be five, and those could all still fit within that sixty five foot envelope.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just a backup plan that the county fire wants to have.
Okay.
John, just one more and we'll move on.
The uh in the power outage, earthquake, whatever, yeah, that that it's powered, is it powered by battery or does it?
Yeah, powered by generators.
Generator, so it would be a generator.
Backup generators.
Yeah, there there are two generators that are already on the side on Fire Station Thirty One. Uh so we'll have batteries and generators both, so first we'll run to batteries and we'll do generators. So uh the county has a standard in terms of how much or the life cycle should be, so if that's what goes on, yeah, thank you.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh I'm going to bring it back to council. Um what I think we need to do going forward with this is is have some of those pictures that you were speaking of, like. In communities uh with trees around them, not with trees around them, I'm sure you can find, um you know, drive along the highway, you can find towers everywhere. So moving forward, I think if you guys bring that back to us, you can get with Scott here, uh get agendized, come back on, and we'll take a look at it. What I'd also like to do is have some of these water towers you're talking about with antennas on them to see how they look. Uh I know it will cost a lot more money for you guys to build that, but you know, at least we could take a look at it and say. Yeah, you know, but it kind of looks, you know, it's it looks out of place or whatever the case is, so. Um and then just the single towers, you know, um I I think i- in a lot of cases, it does just blend in. You know, and people don't even notice that they're there, especially if they're behind buildings, you know, you have a a group of trees and. Um some landscaping around them, whatever the case is, so if you will bring those back, get with him, bring that to another meeting, and then we can make a decision on this. Okay?
Can we all agree that we don't wanna review the alternative sites? I think we're all pretty much in agreement that the alternative site is not something we're interested in pursuing.
Uh, I, I was. I don't wanna say that yet, um, if I can just speak at a turn, um, I'd like to keep that option on the table. I do have initial question, an additional question regarding that site, I wanna follow up with Mr. Wolf about off the record. Um, I also agree with, uh, um, seeing those things, I just also wanted to add, um. The health thing, if there's some kind of like assurances you could put forward that, you know, this is gonna be totally safe, I think that'd be helpful for me. And that maybe seems silly, because we have radio waves beaming around our heads all the time, but if you could, that'd be great.
We do, but as they explain, you would have to be sixty-five feet in the air for that to even affect you.
Right.
And it's going from there to another point, sixty or ninety feet in the air.
Well, so.
So there's no, there's no radiation of humans on the ground from that high frequency.
I, I don't, I don't want it to be burdensome, it doesn't have to be like a secret document or something, right? It's just like, this is gonna be these radio waves, this has been shot, I mean, anything you could provide would be helpful. And I understand what you're saying, I don't wanna be ridiculous, but like even, I mean, people get up in arms about four G LTE coverage. And, and, and the transformers and receivers going in around them, and so I just wanna say, look, we covered our bases. They're doing their thing, this is, this is not gonna harm us.
Right, one quick thing.
Oh, I just wanted to confirm, this is really, I mean, just so we set expectations and the burden, this is just a courtesy, really, you guys can do whatever you want. Okay, I just wanna set expectations for the council, the, thank you for the accommodation to the jury you've gone, so that we aren't overly burdening them with back and forth.
Yes, that's, that's my thought exactly too, I mean, they could basically just say, you know, we're gonna put it up and too bad for you, so we appreciate you guys. At least bringing us into the fold and saying, you know, this is what we're looking at, okay?
Okay.
No, it was just a presentation, um, okay, thank you gentlemen for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to discussion regarding requirement for onsite resident manager for hotel properties. And this will be our planning director, Andrea Kiper.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor King and members of city council. Uh, before you this evening is a discussion item regarding a requirement to have onsite management, resident manager for hotel properties. So this requirement comes out of the California Code of Regulations and is applicable to certain hotel properties. So currently, the city's municipal code, uh, does not address any requirements, uh, for onsite resident manager for hotel properties. And the goal for the, for this evening is to provide information about this particular state code section and give an opportunity for the city council to discuss. Whether or not moving forward, uh, they would like to require onsite management for hotels and motels. Or alternative, alternatively, if they would like to allow some flexibility in this requirement, um, as we will discuss in more detail, uh, later on this evening. Uh, so the full text of the California code section is in your staff report, so I'm, I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but in summary, um. As it pertains to hotels, the code section as written basically requires that hotels with twelve or more guest rooms should have a responsible person, they call it. Uh, reside, reside upon, upon the premises. Uh, so there is addition, some additional language that could provide for some flexibility, um, of the interpretation of this requirement. Uh, the lack of any specific regulation in the Beelton Municipal Code regarding this topic, uh, became apparent when working with a local hotel operator. Uh, this particular hotel has twenty guest, uh, units and is currently being operated and managed remotely by staff at a non-adjacent property. Located a little bit over half a mile from the subject site, uh, both of these particular properties are owned by the same business entity. Uh, because the city does not have any regulations in its municipal code interpreting and implementing California code and re- code of regulations on this topic. Um, it has become difficult to work out a long-term solution for this particular hotel operator. Um, as it would be prudent to address this issue for any future hotel operators, as well as for the current hotel operator in question. Uh, the city attorney has advised staff to seek policy direction from city council regarding the manner in which the state code, uh, should be interpreted, implemented, and enforced in Beelton. So the following options are available, so option A would be basically to enforce the California Code of Regulations as written. In Title twenty-five, Section twenty-four, which would basically mean that the existing hotel in question would be required to have an onsite resident manager. Or option B would be to, um, interpret the, um, onsite resident management obligation as being, um, fulfilled either by. Uh, one, management staff with physical presence twenty-four seven at the property, or two, uh, by management staff available twenty-four seven with physical presence on a nearby property. Under same ownership, um, that are located within some reasonable distance, um, of the subject property. That would be defined as part of a draft ordinance, should the council choose to go in that direction. So I will note that if city council prefers to go with option B, staff would work with the city attorney, uh, to further review the implications of such an ordinance. And would bring back a draft ordinance, uh, with additional information. Um, additionally, if city council prefers option B, staff recommends that several conditions be required to be fulfilled. Of hotels that are subject to California Code of Regulations, um, Title twenty-five, Section, uh, forty-two. Um, I'm not gonna list all of them in detail, they're listed, um, in detail in your staff report, but just to kinda summarize. Basically, it would be, uh, we would condition them, these hotels to, um, prepare an emergency management plan. Emergency response protocols and safety procedures, have, um, accessibility of, from management on a twenty-four hour basis. Um, they would be required to provide a list of contact information for property owner representatives. Post this information, post information about the owner operator, um, they would be required to indemnify the city. Um, also in addition, um, to those requirements, uh, the property owner would be required. Uh, to provide a master code or some other similar mechanism to the sheriff and fire departments. Uh, so that, um, they could obtain access to units and, uh, some of the units in case of an emergency. As well as potentially some video surveillance of the parking area of the hotel. So, um, these are just some examples of some conditions that could be placed, that's not, you know, all inclusive, um, if the council wanted to add more, they could, of course. Um, but all of these conditions would be for the purpose of ensuring safety and security of the hotel site, as well as, um, with the goal of limiting the city's liability. In the circumstance of not having somebody physically residing on the site. So again, currently, staff is only aware of one hotel in Beelton, uh, that there is not a resident manager onsite. However, policy direction for staff on this particular issue would result in staff and the city attorney preparing. A draft ordinance with additional information for the city council to consider, um, and if, um. And whichever option council would go with, um, once adopted, would be, would be the policy direction and requirement of all hotels and motels moving forward. Uh, so with that, the recommendation is that the city council discuss how to proceed, um, with how to apply this particular state code section. Um, pertaining onsite resident managers, um, for hotel properties. Um, and direct staff to return with a draft ordinance that reflects the desired direction of the city council. Uh, so that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
All right, thank you, Andrea, um, any questions for staff? Let's see, no? John?
Yes, we, we have some that's not, is out of regulation now, they're not complying with the rules.
Well, so, yeah, so there's a.
You just stretch it a little bit so they.
Yeah, so currently, you know, we became aware of this state code section, um, you know, once this hotel came online, um, with this particular arrangement of not having onsite management. So it really kinda brought to light the, the need to come up with policy direction on, on this particular issue, so.
Is remote surveillance, um, something that we could require somebody if they?
So, um, you know, one of the options would be to have, um, some cameras installed, you know, say in the parking lot area, and, you know, the idea, I guess, would be whoever's managing, you know. Uh, managing from afar, I guess, that unit would have access to, you know, being able to monitor those cameras, I would assume.
But if somebody's, if somebody wanted to call a manager there, they would just call, there's a, get online and say. Like if they heard some noise in the next room and was complaining about the noise.
Yeah, yeah, so the idea here would be that, um, they would have to post contact information, the city would have access to that contact information. They would also post that contact information on the hotel site, so any guests or anything like that, you know, would, there'd be a dedicated space. Um, at that particular property where it would be posted and available to anybody who might need it, so.
And, and I believe that, um, this particular, um, establishment has the standard telephones in each room. And if you pick up the telephone and dial zero, it, it rings the management that's available twenty-four seven at the hotel up the street. So, um, this functions just as any other motel or hotel would, with the exception that the manager is off-site. A short distance away, as opposed to being specifically onsite, so the, the, the real question here is, is this, um. An acceptable practice here in the city of Beelton? Um, staff had our own concerns about this, we brought the sheriff's department in to discuss it, and, and the conditions that were, uh, um. Proposed here came out of the discussions with the sheriff's department regarding a number of issues that come up at, at hotels and motels everywhere. Uh, in- including such things as just, just security, emergency access, concerns about human trafficking, drug trafficking, those sorts of things that go on. Which is why with the absence of a, a, an onsite person there twenty-four seven, who wouldn't necessarily be watching. The parking lots anyway at all hours of the night. We felt it would be a good idea to include a requirement for that additional surveillance, that would give the. The sheriff's department some additional tools to work with in the event that there was a suspicion of a problem going on. Um, the indemnification allows them to enter a room, even if the, even if the codes that they're given or the keys that they're given fail, they will break down the doors. Which they would do anyway, but this puts everyone on notice that, hey, if we have to do that, it's on, it's, it's on the owners, not on the, on the county or the city for that, so.
I'm sorry, Scott, can you clarify that a little bit for me, like, you're saying. If we take option B and clarify these things and have remote surveillance, they get this indemnity that you're talking about?
No, no, the, the indemnification is a requirement, uh, is, is a, a suggest or recommended requirement that the, that the city would impose upon. Uh, an establishment that would allow the remote management option. Just, just to ensure that by allowing that, the city is not held liable for a problem, uh, that the hotel may have in the event that emergency services have to come in and break down a door. Or damage the property in some way, um, uh, some way that might have been preventable if there had been an onsite manager there.
Yeah, so I would just ask a question, could we, uh, issue a variance for the, the person in, the, the entity in question? If we, if we decided just to reinforce management onsite?
It's not really a variance, this is not a, this is not a city code, we're dealing with, this is a, a state code.
Right.
And, um, I, I will note that this type of an operation that with the remote manager and the, and the, uh. The, uh, reservations online and the coded entry, um, is, is on the rise all over the state, all over the country. Um, it's, yeah, it, it's, it's becoming more and more common. I'm not sure, and, and perhaps the city attorney might have a, a, a comment here, I'm not sure how the state law is evolving to address that. But lacking some clear direction, uh, from the state. It's been felt that if the city council gave us policy direction, at least everyone here locally would be on the same page, and we would know how this would operate in a, in a safe manner.
David? Oh, I, I know it's, this is for any entity that's twelve rooms or more, correct?
Um, yes, for hotels.
Are we to assume that all other hotels are in compliance with this? Are we verifying that all other hotels have an onsite manager available twenty-four seven?
We don't, we, I.
I haven't gone and verified it, I just, it's the only one that I'm aware of.
But I'm just, I'm thinking, so theoretically, when we're talking about this, going one direction or the other could have implications on other businesses taking place. So if we were to say you can't be doing this, we would theoretically then have to audit all businesses to ensure, cause if we're saying no to this one entity in particular, we'd have to make sure every business is following.
If, if we were made aware of a, of, of, a, an establishment that didn't meet this code, we would then. Address that at the time, ultimately, it's not the city's responsibility to enforce this code, this is state code, not a city code.
Gotcha.
Um, we wanna make sure that our actions are in keeping with the state code. Uh, but I, I don't know that we have the staff to necessarily go out and try and, and enforce every state code that's out there. We just wanna make sure we're covering our bases here, um, as, at the local level.
So theoretically, then, if we were to say we wanna stick with option one, and the other, the business decides to not. To still just keep doing remote access, it's not really our concern?
Yeah, so, so if we do go with option one, I believe, Andrea, we're still. Asking for an ordinance to be put in place, that ordinance is gonna give us the authority that we need to open a code enforcement matter, and then look into it that way. I think as Scott mentioned, it's more of, if something becomes of concern, then the city would do it, but I don't think that the city would just automatically audit. The hotels.
Gotcha, so only if it brought to our attention would we deal with it, but we're not going to look to see people are in compliance.
Right.
Okay, and then the other one was going to be, currently, the distance is point six miles between the two properties?
Yes, that's the estimate.
Okay, I, I, I used to do night audit in hotels, and so I've worked in properties where I was the one person onsite, and the property had a one mile radius, and somehow that was just thought to be. Acceptable, but like I worked at the Fest Parker downtown, and to get to the rooms farthest away was a ten minute walk for me to get there if I had to deal with something. So I do have to say that the idea of the, like, there are properties larger than what we're talking about that has one person sitting onsite, so theoretically. The ask that we have right now is kind of, could theoretically be similar to just putting one person in the center of a super large resort and have the same security concerns, so I just wanna.
Are we, are we open to discussion now, or?
No, oh, I'm sorry, I was just, Hudson's calling me out on that, I'm so sorry.
I'm ready, I'm ready to discuss, let's do it.
Okay, so this being, uh, Title twenty-five is basically a state law, they could actually come in there. Themselves and say you're out of compliance with Title twenty-five.
Correct, correct.
So realistically, we're just basically saying. For the one option, we're gonna say that we're gonna make it an ordinance, so we could intervene prior to the state coming in and do it as well.
Yeah, uh, both options would provide an ordinance, but the ordinance is what gives the city, it becomes a city law too. So, um, it provides this authority that we need for, on a code enforcement matter, to go in and like, double check that this is being followed, this policy is being followed. Um, but if, you know, if we did want to go with maybe a more flexible, um, approach. That's when we would look into, on our part, the legality and, you know, what would really help us in terms of, uh. An effective regulation that accommodates maybe within the mile or whatever the proposed distance is. But still keeps in line with the letter of the law.
So, right, so option B would give us a little bit more teeth to say. We have to put up cameras, you have to have, you know, a notification, dial zero, somebody's gonna be there in a couple of minutes.
Five minutes.
Right, whatever the case is, okay, um, stand by, um. Emergency management plan, all that, so if they were out of compliance with any of that, that would be a city ordinance where we could go in there. And violate them on any of those conditions that we put in this ordinance, which I do kinda like that, it's, it's, I think it really kinda. We'll discuss that in a minute, but, um. On two, that would just codify it for us, on option B, okay, uh, any public comment on this? Or a close public comment, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion, and a possible motion on one of these two options, Alicia?
I like the idea of making it a Beelton ordinance and allowing them to be within the mile, like, like you said. It could be one property and it could be over a mile away, so I think that. As a city, we don't wanna work against our business owners, we in all aspects should try to work with them unless it's something that is like egregious or something that. You know, could be opening us up to some kind of absurd liability, I don't think either of those things are the case here, and I think considering. They're doing just fine right now, that it makes sense to move forward in a way that works with our business, but also gives Beelton teeth if we need to.
Okay, let's. So I, uh, I think it should, uh, we should require a manager onsite twenty-four seven, either option we go with, either we do A or B. Um, I think, uh, just in terms of like, the, these hotels are in residential areas. If, you know, a, a community member calls for to complain for a noise violation, cops would show up, where's the, where's the, is your office? Oh, it's, it's down the road down here, what, uh, okay, go down there, that's technically the same building, oh, it's the same business, I mean, all those confusions are just put to rest, we don't have to worry about any of that. Um, and same for the, the, the people in the hotel, um, quite frankly. Uh, I think in terms of all the safety concerns, all the liability concerns, all the residential concerns, it just makes sense to have, uh, manager onsite twenty-four seven. Um, if that's the letter of the law already, just, let's do that.
Okay. Doc?
Yeah, yeah. I disagree with making new rules, the, that's not our law, not our, it's not our jurisdiction, it's not. We're gonna have to make new rules or have attorneys make new ordinances or anything. If we accept that they, they have the property, they have the managers, they're gonna have, they're the ones that have to. Maintain their property, and they probably have cameras anyway. Um, and they're not just gonna willy-nilly not hang out because they don't have to have somebody there. And by, by requiring it, you're gonna take some, make somebody. Pay somebody to be there at night, all that. pay somebody to be there at night, all that. They've already, I think I think it's better to just take option B and say, keep an eye on it if there's a problem. But we don't need to make our own rules and spend money as legal or even writing anything else about it. The option B is just accept that they have an like they have at Fest Parker, the guys, the guys a thousand steps away or whatever, the guy's going to be there in a minute and they have their own I think they have their own interest in mind. So I would go for an option B without asking for anything special, anybody for anything more.
Just to be clear and just to for exclusivity of what we're doing here. If we choose option B, we have to come up with an ordinance anyway.
No, we just say we just accept that they that they have somebody on, they have somebody on twenty-four seven, it's just they're not on property.
Wait, 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 let's not get into an argument up here.
It wasn't arguing.
But I'm sorry.
Hudson is correct. If you go with option B, these terms, one, A, B, C, D, all that would become codified so that if there is an issue in that particular piece of property, that then we can violate that them with this ordinance, correct, council?
Yes.
Okay, so what they're doing is is adding some conditions. If you're not going to have somebody there to comply with Title twenty-five, then here's the conditions we're going to give you, that you have to have cameras, you have to have a mercy plan, you have to have management accessibility, et cetera, et cetera, based on all these other ones, okay? That's what the two options are. We're we're voting yes on option one or yes on option two, which both of those will become Bulton city ordinance. So that under option one, as our counselor said, is that it will also become a city ordinance as well as a state law. So we could step in there prior to the state coming in and say you're in violation of our ordinance that you have to have somebody onsite and you do not, okay? Option B is giving conditions and not saying someone has to live onsite.
Or also requiring onsite. Right, option B, you could do require onsite and all those options, or not require onsite and all those options.
Well, not the way it's written here.
So I think with option B, you know, you could, the I guess the idea would be there's sort of sub options under option B and it just some, you know, ideas where somebody wouldn't have to actually reside onsite, but there would have to be a physical, there you could require that there have to be physical presence of management twenty-four seven. So it's sort of a minor nuance to that, but
We would have to write that into this.
Right.
Yeah, but just like any other.
Right, see that's
I I will just note too that this particular hotel that we have been dealing with, while they have not implemented all of these, they have implemented many of them already. Just because in our conversations with them, making sure that it's safe and secure. So just to kind of throw that out there, that the hotel that we have been talking about has implemented many of these provisions.
Right, and 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 I have not read Title twenty-five, however. We can't supersede state law no matter what we do. I mean, they could always at some point in time come in and say you have to comply with having somebody onsite. Regardless of what we do here tonight, they could still supersede us because unfortunately, sometimes all state law supersedes local law. Otherwise, there were some things here in this town that would not be here. However, this John is just giving us an option to say we require you to have these things. And if you do not, then you will violate our city ordinance.
But I think the confusion is, John, you're thinking that if we don't do anything and leave it to state law, that they're okay as they are, which is not the case, right?
No, I just it it just says interpret that the onsite resident management obligation is being fulfilled.
That So you're suggesting doing nothing and saying that we're interpreting them as doing what they need to do anyway?
Yeah, if they have somebody twenty-four seven half a mile away.
Right.
They would that that should cover their interests. Yeah, it's good enough for them, but we're we're asking for more. We're asking them to do more.
You're you're pro option B and leaving it just as it is?
Yeah, but that's what they're doing. They're they have they have an interest in their property. They want to keep peace and they want to take and they're going to be responsible for calls. They're going to have all that. It's already done. They already have management staff that they think is appropriate. Where they're at, they own the two properties. And for us to want to make up a new rule that no, you have to do this, you have to do that, they're they're already doing this. So all all it says is assume that they're being that it's being fulfilled. That's option B. Without the rest of everything else, it's just an assumption that's being fulfilled. So we don't have to make a new rule, write up new laws and have more requirements. I I just think they have their own property, they want to take care of it. I don't think we have to make up a new law. That's that's my view of option B.
I think option B makes sense. I think it's already happening. I think that we should operate in the face of reality that these are going to continue to go. So I'd rather put guardrails up. These conditions have been created off of best practices of a business that's already figured out how to make it work that I, to my recollection, doesn't have any issues that have been reported. That there have been safety concerns, there's been issues, there's been emergency protocol violations, nothing. That they've been doing this for about a year now. So this has been tested out to be a system that they've created on their own that we now are recognizing has worked already up to this point theoretically, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so I think that then we should codify what has already been created by people who are running the business as a best practice that we have been able to run this with these situations. And I I hear what you're saying, John, but I think that if we're going to have this, we should set up rules and regulations because a business could maybe have a remote access that doesn't have these things in place that then could be an issue for us. We're lucky that the first people that have been dealing with this have created a system that's working. So I think we should go with option B, interpret an onsite resident manager obligations being fulfilled remotely, and we should codify one, all these emergency responses and the things the city's saying that would just help us be more regulated in this unregulated space.
Uh, yeah, and I have a tendency to agree with that. And it's really not unreasonable what we're asking for that and there is a trend, as you said, that we're, you know, some of these other places are going to say, hey, we don't have to pay somebody twenty-four seven to be on the site, but we do have to be responsible to an emergency management plan, protocols, management accessibility, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think that that what we're asking here is actually unreasonable and what are we looking at? Okay, and I will entertain a motion on this.
Well, it sounds like I'm the only person who's for option A. Or I would do option B and interpret onsite management obligations being fulfilled by management staff with physical presence twenty-four seven at the property.
Isn't that option A though?
That's Well, it basically option A is just enforce Title twenty-five, section forty-two.
You can also have
Yes, we could
B and add the additional
That's that is correct.
Right, and so I was going to say, just to keep in mind Silva's comment, the this is one, this is one business and that so we're saying it's going well, but we're now codifying that for every other business and every other enforcement for the city. So it's not just like this one business, like this is going to be our code that we require for all other all other hotels. This is how we're going to enforce all other
Well, we're not enforcing anything. We we
We can't yet.
No, but I mean, like, we're not we're not doing anything at all. This at least is
So correct me if I'm wrong, but this is guidance to interpret how we're going to interpret Title twenty-two, right?
Well, yes.
Title twenty-five, section forty-two.
In in a sense, that's what's going on. What we're what we're really looking for is council policy that we will interpret because ultimately, as I mentioned, we could not do anything right now. State law is going to prevail either way. What we have to do though as the city is issue a permit for a new hotel, let's say a new hotel comes into town and wants to do this, we have to issue a permit with an acknowledgement that they're not going to have onsite management. They've got this alternative arrangement set up. It's still the state's role to to enforce that, but we don't have a policy saying, yeah, we want to do this or no. So what we're looking for from staff is how do you want to address this? Once, once we establish that, we can bring back an ordinance that can be codified and that will be the law of the land here in Bulton. If the state disagrees with how we're dealing with it, that's on them to come pound on us or pound on the the hotel management. All all we want to make sure that we we're doing is providing a a framework within which if the council decides to go this way, we can ensure some degree of control in the future. If there's a problem, we can address it and some degree of of safety and security for the people who are who are at the hotel. And so that's where these proposed conditions have come from through discussions with the hotel management and the sheriff's department. But that's what we're up to. It's it's completely a policy decision on the council's part. You can do whatever you like in this regard. If you're not sure, you can give us some broad direction. We can kind of try and hone in on a solution and bring this back to you for the discussion at a later date.
Has this been Or we can just vote on it right now.
Well, we're going to have to bring back an ordinance in the future, but yes.
We have to vote on what the option is.
Some of these may be covered already. Maybe they already have cameras, maybe they already
That would be for them to, you have to audit and do
We have, shouldn't we have a with them?
We're we're not, we're not preparing, we're not suggesting we develop a policy to address a an individual business. We're looking at developing a policy to address any potential business of the same sort in the future. So if this were about this one business, we wouldn't be here right now because we would just let sleeping dogs lie until we had an issue with it, but recognizing that this is going to be an issue we're facing in the future. We want to be able to get in front of this and have the ability to address issues before they become a problem.
If someone else wants to do this, won't they have to come to us for for a permit for business? And at that time, could we ask them to?
They would have to come to staff at the very least, and if they come to staff and we don't necessarily, if you don't have a policy, we don't have any way to to address
This would have to be codified.
Yeah. And we could do that. We could, we could include as part of this, a requirement if they want to have an off a an offsite manager as opposed to onsite manager, we could make that a conditionally permitted use and require them to come get a conditional use permit to require a planning commission hearing, and that would address it in a public hearing sort of format. These are things we can bring back to the council in in the form of an ordinance. We're just looking for the direction as to which way to go right now.
Right, but if you just put that into your conditions, you still wouldn't really have any way to enforce it if you didn't have it codified to say you're out of compliance with A, B, C, X, Y, Z.
We could say you're out of compliance with your conditions and we would have a code enforcement avenue there. It is much more, in my opinion, it's much more effective to have the condition that are backed up by a municipal code section.
Right.
The suspenders approach, but
Say you have to follow this Title twenty-five, section forty-two.
Motion to approve option B with the conditions of approval recommended by staff and to allow the space that if any other conditions come up in the legal evaluation of it, that those be brought back at for us to decide.
Second.
Sorry, for option, you option B with what options?
The conditions of approval recommended that was here in the packet.
What about, so are you asking for twenty-four seven management or not?
No, they are asking for emergency management plan, emergency response protocol, so one, A, B, C.
Twenty-four man, twenty-four seven management within a mile or some
Yeah, within, yeah. Yeah, within within a mile, with with twenty, with the requirement being met as long as there's staff within twenty-four seven staff within a mile of the property. Did I get everything to the degree that you're comfortable with?
Yes, we're actually going to work with staff and make sure that everything that is being proposed, we can defend legally.
Okay, perfect. So that's the motion just. Do you still want a second that?
I still want a second.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Horneck.
No.
Uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
No.
And Mayor King.
Aye. Okay, let us move on to number eleven.
We'll wait.
You want to break? Are we on the record breaking?
Yeah, we'll just wait. Just going to take a pause. We're all going to just know. Do you want to go on a break?
No, I'm just saying I missed enjoying that. It's like here being recorded.
We get some jeopardy music going?
Get us a list of things that you can eat. Andy Weiss, we'll make sure it's in the bowl.
Thank you. Uh, no, what was the circle ones, the lint ones? I need those.
Oh, the lint?
The circle ones that she had before?
Yeah, the balls.
Yeah.
Eighteen sixty-two. This Portuguese sailor was also known for a spice trade. Is Captain Hug. Aren't you supposed to bring dinner for us every council meeting? Wasn't that the
Facilitate the ordering.
All right, we will move on to number eleven, discussion of possible changes to planning commission appointment procedures, planning commission duties, planning commissioner terms and the filling of planning commissioner vacancies. And once again, the lead on this is going to be Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm sure you all recall at a number of points during the past year, year and a half, there have been discussions regarding various aspects of planning commission appointments, operations, areas of concern and consideration and terms. I have addressed each of these in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have about them. In in general, what we're looking for is direction to bring back to the council. Probably a series of documents that address these different factors. We can go over them very, I'll go over them very quickly so that we just have a rundown and the public can understand what's going on. There there has been discussion about creating a document that establishes what the appropriate purview scope of the planning commission's consideration would be. Obviously, planning commissions are put in place to address or to consider issues and make decisions on issues that pertain to the city's general plan, the city's municipal code zoning ordinance, the city's architectural design guidelines, those types of very focused planning type of policies. However, much as the city council does, there are other issues that are recognized that that can be taken into consideration. Some of those could be things like fiscal impacts to the city as a whole. Issues pertaining to the use or no or allowance or disallowance of use of city owned property. Park or street policies that kind of bleed in at some at some point in time to different planning applications that come through. In a lot of cities, those those types of of issues are very, well, they're clarified to an extent. Either the planning commission has the ability to address those issues or they don't have the ability to address those issues. In a lot of cases, city councils prefer to address those types of issues outside of the general plan, zoning ordinance, architectural design guidelines. They reserve that for the planning, or excuse me, for the city council's discretion rather than the planning commission. In order to avoid confusion on this matter in the in the future, I would suggest that the city council consider some sort of a policy document that outlines the purview of that. The staff report addresses what what our current situation is as well as alternatives for each of these issues, and I can discuss those alternatives through the question process if you'd like. The next issue to be addressed here is the issue of planning commissioner appointments. How are planning commissioners appointed? Currently, our process involves the city clerk identifying a vacancy on the planning commission and releasing a a a notice to to accept applications to fill that vacancy. In the past, the the city council has held a or during one of its regular meetings, the city council has held interviews for the applicants for that position, and then the council has selected from among the applicants that are there. This has Um, this has this has worked. Um, but it has been proposed by one or two or maybe more members of the city council that it might be more beneficial in the future to have each individual city council member nominate a planning commissioner and have those nominations ratified by the city council. The 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 argument, I guess, that that might work best in favor of that practice is that in the event, and we don't have that right now, but in the event we had a very uh divided city council, there's a clear majority and a clear minority that that we're constantly fighting with each other. Um, in in that sort of a situation. Um, if we used our current process with it, it's entirely possible that the majority of the planning, or excuse me, the majority of the city council could appoint uh planning commissioners that reflect the viewpoint of that majority of the city council. And so the planning commission wouldn't have a diversity of political perspective on this, whereas if each individual member of the city council were to make an appointment. Um, then the planning commission could have a political diversity that reflects that of the city council as a whole. Um, something to think about. We can continue forward in the process that we've been working. That's fine. If you'd like to change to a different process, we can do that as well. If you decide to go to a a um a system wherein the city council members appoint um a planning, each appoint their own planning commissioner, then uh we need to um I lost my train of thought here. I'm sorry. We need to um make a determination as to whether or not that appointment needs to come from the district that that council member serves in or not. Something to think about, something to discuss to discuss. I know that it it may be difficult in some districts to find a willing planning commissioner. And um from my perspective, one of the dangers of having the district uh uh planning commissioners appointed by district is that you wind up with um a circumstance wherein the planning commissioner feels it's their responsibility to protect their district as opposed to making decisions that are best for the city as a whole. Um, planning commissioner terms has also been brought up currently that the planning commissioners serve um. What is it? A four year term? Four year terms, they are staggered. Uh, if the plant, if the city council members were to appoint their own planning commissioners, that that term could run with uh the term of the city council member. It could also be set up to to run a shorter term, perhaps a two year term, allowing each council member to um change directions midstream if you wanted to and appoint a different commissioner somewhere along the line. That that's entirely up to you. The issue with terms, though, is is uh as well as the issue with uh each council member appointing commissioner will have the potential impact of unseating some of our current planning commissioners whose terms have not yet expired. So we should consider uh whether that is um the direction you want to go. The last issue I want to discuss under this item has to do with a vacancy on the planning commission that exists currently. As you know, um, uh, Planning Commissioner De Fazio has recently resigned her seat on the commission, and so we have a vacancy. Um, at this point, there is a um, let's see, her term was set to expire in twenty twenty six, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Okay, so if there were a change to the term structure of the planning commissioners, it's conceivable that filling this seat at this point could um result in a commissioner with only a four month or five month term by the time that we actually accept applications and and have the interviews and the council makes an appointment and they start, they could have four months or less left on the commission before that term were to expire. Um, that is something to take into consideration as well as how you want that to take place. If you want to fill that seat right now, how do you want to do that? Do you want to do the uh the the uh process we currently use, or do you want to come up with some other method of doing that? All of these are purely policy oriented decisions. I am more than happy to give you my recommendations from an operational standpoint. But you have to decide what's what the right decisions are from the city council's perspective. Trying not to talk about this too much, so I'm gonna stop right now and just respond any questions you have.
Scott, that's way too many options.
Don't talk about.
Too many options. Okay, um, you know, I I'll bring it back to council. Um, any questions for staff, John?
No questions.
David, no questions.
And and I dare.
One, I was just gonna, we didn't talk about Tree City.
Oh, I I did not bring it up. That that would that would be an appropriate discussion under the 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 planning commission purview or scope uh discussion. And a- as as you and I have discussed previously, with regard to the possibility of of uh applying for it being granted Tree City USA status, one of the requirements for that is that we have a tree board that addresses issues regarding trees and landscaping. Um, given the size of our staff, I am very, very hesitant to recommend creating another Brown Act required uh but um. And so in order to avoid that and yet still meet the requirements for Tree City, I would suggest that if the council is amenable to this, we include tree and landscape uh issues as part of the planning commission's purview. That way the the bo- the body already exists. We can include it within the things that they already discussed. And uh I think we can meet the requirements of Tree City through that process.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, Linda, do we have any public comment on this or Scott?
No.
Okay, now close public comment, bring it back to the council for further discussion and direction for staff.
I think that it's important for each city council member to have more of an impact on who's appointed. I hate the idea of by district, but I do think that each city council member choosing someone is important. Um, so I would be, you know, in favor of that. And I don't really have a preference on terms. I'm fine with them having keeping the four year term and keeping that if that works for you. If you think that there's something better, I would defer to your judgment. And I would like to work on a handbook of sorts as in your in your backup material. I think a handbook would be helpful. It outlines the duties and their scope and that kind of stuff.
We 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 will certainly do that. Once we get a handle on everything the council is looking to do from a policy perspective and figure out how that will be implemented, the planning director and I can sit down and 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 work out the details of a planning commissioner handbook.
Thank you.
John?
Um, we're gonna do this like by section if we all decide that we want to have an appointed city council of planning commissioner. Is that gonna be one rule we just make a decision on and then the next question would be the terms and then when we have these all these variables in here. But is that, I'd like, if we're gonna decide to do that, that should be one vote. And then the next vote should be on what the when the terms expire, when so there's more, it's more tiered, I believe, than all coming up with how about this and how about that? You know what I mean?
Do we need a motion for each one individually, or are you looking for direction?
I don't think we're looking for a motion. Direction is good, but but taking that approach would be very helpful from my perspective so that I can I understand exactly what you're asking for from each uh each each issue.
And how many issues? I mean, we have, how many identified issues?
There's there's four, I believe. There's um there's uh planning scope of planning commission purview. There's the uh appointment of the planning commissioners. There is the uh uh planning commissioner terms, and then there's how we address the current planning commissioner vacancy.
So what I think you're looking for is whether we appoint or not, whether we leave it status quo, leave it the same, uh write a handbook for these people terms. Um, and and then uh approved by majority, basically, of the council after appointment. David?
Do you want to break it out by chunks? Do we want to just start with purview and all go through that and then terms, all go through that, appointment, all go through that and filling a vacancy all through that? Would that be easier so that we can do bite sized discussions? So we're not having to track four different scorecards on five different people?
Um, yes.
It'd be easier for me.
Right, so maybe we just could start with purview. And just kind of round robin that and see where we get consensus of a majority on, and then we could go to the next one.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to lead? Start there? Do you want to start over?
Uh, no, go ahead.
Um, I think that I like option or alternative. Ooh, I like that there's we're going purview, alternative two would be my selection on the menu. I think that having a handbook is very useful. And I think that the same time creating the um kind of the guiding document, the one sheet or whatever that is, so that while the handbook's being created and being thoughtful and getting the feedback, there's some general direction. So I think alternative to handbook with a one pager preview of coming attractions is my preference.
Right, I think then and Alicia agreed with that, that I think that uh we should have a handbook, you know, very much like our uh city council manual. So basically, they would have a document says, okay, now you're here you go. You're new on um planning commission. Read this. This is your your uh direction for planning. Okay, uh, does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I I know an alternative to though. You could if you ten it's gonna take a while, could you just do a one sheet? Can you do that?
That that's what the suggestion is to do the handbook, but uh initially bring in the one sheet. That that kind of outlines the 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 general scope and then follow up with the handbook for a moment.
Right, okay.
I like that.
Everybody agree with that?
John?
Here. Okay, before we move off from that, uh the 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 purview and scope, are are we looking for something more broad where uh or or more narrow? When I say more narrow, I'm talking about limiting the scope to things like general plan, zoning ordinance, architectural review committee, tree and landscape if we want to go there. Or do we want to uh leave it less defined and more broad so that the commission can consider things like fiscal impact to the city um.
Uh, negative. That's our job.
I'd like narrow.
Yeah, that's that's our job. And so I I think, and we've talked, we've had conversations about this in the past is that they need to have some scope to say it's zoning ordinances, it's design plan, et cetera, et cetera. And you are not to go into how is this fiscally uh impact the city? That's our job. Okay, so they need to since you you have um zoning ordinances and and things of that nature that are in your purview. And so I think there has been some things here in the past where they have gone on some tangent saying, well, this would be, this would be good for the city, you know, fiscally. Well, that's not their job.
Okay.
Okay? All right, let's move on. Okay. Uh, so we'll go council appointed. That's that's kind of a difficult one there. Um y- you would have to basically go out and recruit.
No, you just pick from who applies and you pick your person.
Well, then that's basically status quo unless you're just gonna say, I want to pick this person out and say, okay, that's that's my pick for this. But we still have to all can have consensus on who your pick is.
Right, but right now, the way we do it, it's like um it's kind of like a
It goes out for an application.
Well, right, that I think we still do. We bring in the applications and then we each get to pick our person from the applications. And absent some sort of real conflict, you don't get to say no. Basically, the rest of us don't get to say no to that person's pick. Whereas now, you can be outvoted if there's, you know, like, sorry, but I don't want this person. I want that person. And then
Right on notes.
Well, then you're so then you're taking away our ability to if we if you pick somebody, you take our ability away to say no. That's the point.
Yeah, I understand.
In in other cities, how this has has worked with that I've worked with. First of all, we we have to, we have to go out for uh applications. You don't you can go out and recruit somebody, but if the person you recruit doesn't fill out an application, they can't be considered. I think that's a maniac requirement. Um, so we we've got to do the the application part. In other cities where they that I've worked, where they've done this sort of each council member appoints their own commissioner. The council member nominates a commissioner. And the city council, as a matter of city council decorum, will ratify, will respect the nomination of an individual city council member and will ratify that selection unless there is some horribly egregious thing that they can there's some that they can point to why that person is not suitable to serve on the planning commission. Um, and likewise, at some point in the future, the city council, I believe, in most of these places can remove a planning commissioner for the same thing. Where, you know, regardless of 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 who appointed that person, but it's it's a matter of decorum and respect amongst the city council that they're going to ratify the nomination of a city council member unless there's a very good reason not to. That again is, that's why this is a pure policy decision on the part of the council. You all have to make it work in the long run.
Can can a councilman fire his own planning commissioner?
That's something you need to decide. It I I I've I've seen that before and I've seen it where they can't. It takes a a um
I would like to say no to that. I mean, that's why, but I would like to suggest to your term for that. I know we're getting outside of our little category here, but that's kind of why to your term would be good. If you know, if you're appointed planning commissioner doesn't do well, you okay, look, I'm not gonna nominate you for reappointment after two years. I don't like the idea of you do what I say or I'm firing you. That seems a little too heavy.
No, but we could put it on the agenda that, you know, I thought that Suzie'd be a good planning commissioner, but turns out she's gone, you know, I I don't really like agree with her anymore. She's gone out of bounds and I'd like to make a motion to remove her. And then we vote on her removal.
That goes to what Hudson's saying, like if she like you, let's just use the in and out example. You wanted in and out and you appointed someone that you thought felt the same. And then when they came down to it, they said no, and now you're like, no, I don't want them. That would be more like us controlling also the vote of the planning commission, which wouldn't
Right.
Look good. It wouldn't be a good policy.
Know what the appointment is?
Let's not get into a three way conversation here. Um, and 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 I I I think to Alicia's point, that is correct is because then someone will always be, you know, uh pins and needles whether whatever decision they're gonna make, they're gonna get fired. And so I I don't think that's a very good idea for an individual council member to be able to remove somebody. However, we could put into there that uh with um a majority vote that they could be removed. Therefore, you kind of take that person out of the loop by just being able to say, well, I appointed you now, I'm firing you. This this is what you're alluding to, correct?
Right, that that would not be an option.
Yeah, that would be the with the sword of Damocles hanging over their head on the council.
I think we should, like, if we do that, I think we should make it a four fifths or unanimous, not just a majority.
Well, I say I say four fifths because wait, and here's why I'm gonna go with your four fifths is because the one person is suggesting that they fired their own commissioner. So if you go with a four fifths vote, then that commissioner's out. Because you're gonna have one person that's gonna be upset at that commissioner. That's why they're trying to do that in the first place, correct? See what I'm saying? If you wanted to fire your commissioner,
Right.
the rest of us could say, no, you're not gonna do that because you're just pissed at him.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and ultimately, I think the goal of this is to like, is to get good people, right? It's not to control what they do. We don't want to be the planning commissioners. We want them to do their job. We're just trying to you know, get solid people that we think will be doing a job and represent the city in the way that we think it should go. And so we give them the discretion. We shouldn't just be like, no, you know, I didn't like that vote. You're done.
For me, this is less about my council voice and more about opening the door, the doors to the community and making the council and the planning commission more accessible because it seems like once people know other people, they tend to gravitate towards those people, and it makes it very hard for new faces to be involved. And for me, it's more of a safety net that would allow the doors to open easier to new faces. So it's less about me exerting my will for my voice, but more about opening the doors to a broader stroke of the community.
Okay, does everyone agree with um with all with one of us um appointing their own commissioner and then being ratified by the rest of us? I would agree with that.
At a citywide level?
Yes.
Not a district specific?
Yes, yeah.
At large. Yeah, I like that.
And and I will bring back with that the ability to remove a commissioner with four fifths vote of the council. Is that
May I ask what the current policy is?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that there is one.
No. Yeah. Four fifths sounds fun.
Right, okay, yeah, I think the council can remove commissioner.
What happens if we all really don't like the direction and we have no option?
Right.
If we don't include it.
That's how it is now, though.
I I don't think there's a there's a I don't think there's anything codified other than I I believe the code and we can look this up, but I believe the code says that that the the planning commission serves at the at the pleasure of the city council. So you would have the authority to remove them. I'm sure that that's that's the case. I I just don't, I'm not sure what the language is.
Sounds like four fifths is actually even more restrictive than the current policy.
It it would be, I believe.
Cause I the pleasure of city council right now is three fifths. So, all right.
I think part of what Alicia's brought up with this is to ensure minority. Perspective protection within that, and at this point, if you had individual appointment with a three fifths ability to remove. That's the same as just, uh it's just more steps to being able to decide with the majority who's on city council, so I do think four fifths ensures the. Intention of this, which is if there was a four-one council, the one person on council gets to have a planning commissioner. And theoretically, it's hard to, I I I think that it provides more to Alicia's in the vein of what we're trying to do, which is ensure. That perspective perspective is protected.
Right, and I I don't think an absolute majority is a good idea.
Oh, good luck getting that.
Right? Okay, so Scott, we got that, so let's go with term. Term, so there's four or two?
I like two years.
Two, John. But then here's, I'll give you the rationale is.
You get it too, cause you're the mayor, but we get four because we're, and we may have three new people here next year. But if somebody gets voted in for for a four-year term. Then that's then that's their, they're gonna be here for four years, they promised the community to serve four years. And that and then that's who they want. But to have somebody come in, where you come in for two years, or you wanna come, you know, I'm here for four, but I'll ask you to come in for two. And then we'll see if you're gonna be voted in again for another two.
Well, I think most of the people, though, John, realistically is are are going um. If they have a two-year term, that gives you the option to really not, you know, be the bad guys, it just they don't get reappointed. People that do come on the commission, most likely they're gonna want another term anyways, and so we will just, you know, vote them again on the. On the second term, see what I mean? I mean, if somebody's, if somebody, if somebody's on commission and they're a problem. They could also just be gone in two years.
Two years, but if the two years, it would be a three to two vote at that time. Right? That's why that's important.
All five would would be would be up for renewal at the same time.
Oh, you're talking about, so that's.
Every council member would would appoint um um for a two-year term and then in two years, every city council member would reappoint. For another two-year term.
And and most likely it would be the same people. You know, looking at how long these guys have been on, some of them anyways have been on our planning.
Do you have to do what?
Everybody vote at the same time?
Well, if you go with a two-year term, it's the way it works because you get elected, you appoint a planning commissioner. And if every every, we only have elections in even numbered years, right?
Yeah, no, I see that, but I also see the fact that we have a vacancy now, and like we could, I was thinking we could, we could delay the appointment of a planning commissioner for a year until the. City council member got up to speed or whatever it was.
You could delay the, you could delay the appointment of this city council over here, it would be the direction it looks like it's going, it would be until. After the next election in in December, then you'd have the city council as it's then constituted, each council member would be able to appoint. A planning commissioner at that point.
And it would most likely be the same people. I mean, you may just be taking, you appointed somebody two years down the road, you want to appoint the same person. Same with John down at the end, you got, you appoint somebody two years later and go, I want to reappoint this person. It's not like you're throwing them off, but I think it gives you a little bit of more flexibility to say, I don't want to reappoint this person after two years because. They've been making some imprudent decisions, see what I mean?
So my my appointed planning commissioner, if I lose my election, the reelection. Then or I don't run for reelection, then you will reappoint, and that will that planning commissioner remain a planning commissioner? Or he'll, will he lose his term because I I didn't right run again?
I I don't think that's gonna run into a major issue, honestly, because. Most likely, if they're on planning commission, you don't get reelected, they're probably going to reapply anyways. And most likely, that person is gonna say, yeah, they've done a great job over the last four years, so let's just put them right back on planning commission.
Or the new or the new one will just not reappoint, I mean, just. Somebody comes in after I've left.
Yeah, they can reapply even if you're gone, you know, and like I said, most likely, if they're doing a good job, they will probably get reappointed.
But the new city council member that comes in can appoint one and then would, that would just negate the one that's in there.
Yes, ye- yes, you're correct, you, they said, I want to appoint someone else.
Then that's the end of their term.
That's the end of their term after two years or four years or six years or whatever it is.
I I I think I understand what uh Councilmember Sanchez is getting at and and I I would. Offer to bring back to the city council, if this is the direction you want to go. A procedure for dealing with a planning commissioner in the event of a midterm vacancy on the city council or a midterm change of council member.
Right.
So if um you know, we have a council member who's who's in the third year of his term and has to leave. And the council appoints, or there's a special election for a new uh council member, that council member then. Would either, depending on council policy, have to be able to a appoint a. Commissioner for the rest of that one-year term that would be left, or would. Would have to live with the existing commissioner that's been appointed until the end of that term.
Sounds more reasonable that if, let's say, he says I'm moving to Puerto Rico. And he's got a year left on his, I think you should leave that planning commissioner in place until the next election. And the next council member, is that what your point is? Like if you're for some reason.
Or, no, but like next January, when we all have start our new terms. And we made our decision, are we gonna all say, I'll keep? Pick pick one, we'll keep one of them, or we all gonna point brand new planning commission?
Point, and if there is a repeat, then it's a repeat, and if it's not, it's not, right?
But some of these may be mid-cycle, so I think for this, if we're changing the policy. We should leave them until the end of their terms that they have now, and then start this program. After their, after this term is over, see what I'm saying?
So the two.
Like if he's got, if you've got, you're done, right? But some of these people may have four year, uh two more years. After the mids, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
David would keep their, keep one, and the three new uh electees. Whether we, oh, it could be three different people, then they will have, at the end of this, at the end of the term, or at the end of this election cycle. There'll be three new planning commissioners as appointed by. The three.
They're gonna be appointed anyways.
Well, we have, there's two that are gonna have to finish up their term.
Let's, let me tease this out a little bit and maybe help. If the city council goes with two-year terms for the planning commissioners. Then the um then the decision to be made is. We have, we have two council, or excuse me, two planning commissioners with terms ending in twenty twenty-six. So the question that comes up, if you want to allow them to finish their terms until twenty twenty-six. Is which two of the the city council members on the dais in? December, when after the election is over, which two council members will not select a new planning commissioner? And let them fill out their their the end of their terms. Another way to approach this is. Through this policy, just declare everyone, all the terms end in December of this year. And then if you want to reappoint one of the existing commission, one of the two existing or any of the existing commissioners. Have them fill out an application and submit it to the city, and then that can happen that way. It it it, if you, if you go two years, though, everyone's on the same cycle, we don't have staggered terms. Um if you go on a four-year situation, then you do have staggered terms except for the mayor's appointment. Who's gonna be on a two-year term because the mayor serves a two-year term. So um it it's, it gets a little complicated um.
Well, it always is when you change.
It is, exactly, till you figure out how to make it work.
No matter when you pick a cycle, if you're going from four years to two years, there's gonna be some discussion about, if you want to move to two-year terms, it's gonna hit someone at some point. And at this point, there is the slight convenience that it's only two instead of three, which is literally the smallest amount of people impacted by on this. On the planning commission possible is at this time. It if you wait waited two more years from now, then it'd be a three, three being mitigated.
Actually, we would have three, except for Commissioner DeFazio has resigned, so the council could simply state, we're not going to. If you appoint this new commissioner, you're either gonna appoint them for four or five months or for. Uh or until twenty twenty-six, your call, but the, if you wanted to avoid that eventuality, you could simply say that this is for a term that ends in twenty twenty-four.
I think we, I if we want to go to two years, I think you have to get everyone on the same cycle, that's the only way it's gonna work without it being missed.
Five new planning commissioners.
Potentially, it could also be five or four of the exact same and one new one, just like we're sitting looking at now, all it's gonna do. If any of you still want any of the commissioners that are still here, is make them jump through the hoop of submitting another application two years earlier than they would.
And we might get more people who apply. Cause it's a two-year term, four years is a long time to commit.
Terms is two years, people are like, how long is it? Four years? I mean, people are reluctant to to dedicate that much of their time to it. Which is another thing I was gonna suggest is give them a pay raise.
Well, the downside. The downside of starting at ground zero is that you could change all five of them at once. Yep. And then they're 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 so far behind the curve. It it would take them a year to catch up, just to get, just to bring up, get up to speed. This is the reason we're, we are on different cycles, so you don't have.
Right.
Five new city or four new city council mayor and a mayor, and they're all like, um, what do we do now?
Yeah.
So I'm almost, I'm almost thinking that the four-year term for them is a good idea, because then you're gonna stagger them.
I like, I like not doing them all new right off the bat, I like, I like a two-year term, but I don't, I don't like. Housing somebody who's already signed up for four-year term.
So then the question comes up, if that's the direction you want to go in December, which two council members or which three council members will appoint? For a four-year term or.
Two years.
Two-year term, and which two council members will not?
Couple of ways you can handle that, um we we could do uh whoever is up for election, those people don't get to vote. Or we could do a breakdown of, and then we're not doing district planning commissioner requirement. But we could see where the planning commissioners currently are seated in the district and say those people will have a vote, and so those, whoever's. Whoever's planning commissioners are in that district. Whoever's, excuse me, the planning commissioners who are in the city council members' district, those council members don't vote.
Or what if we just ask, like, I'm totally fine if I'm still here?
To not have a vote.
For the, for the first, to let them finish it, like.
Right.
Whatever, I I whatever. Like, is there anyone else that's like, okay, cool, we'll let them finish it, but that that's your vote, that's your, like. I don't think it, we need to make it, like, let's not overthink it.
Right.
Cause if if, John, if you feel that strongly, then there has to be one there that you want to keep, there we go, there's one.
Well, the only thing that I don't like about that is that if somebody.
Why not be here?
Right, that's the thing, is it's like somebody new comes in.
I was trying to be too simple.
But they could, they they negate all the experience. So you get three new people to say, I wanna get my neighbor in there. And you get rid of the people that have been working hard for the community and putting in their time.
We got, we got three new company right here.
Here's how we could resolve. Is that? Four-year terms, staggered. And the two people that are up for election this cycle get to a point. Where, I'm not, see what I'm saying, that who who's up for election in this year? You and John?
No, the people that stay.
Are you up for election this year? Okay, these two would appoint a cap- a a planning commissioner. And then stagger four years along with theirs, because I'm, I do have a problem with the two-year and starting at ground zero because. Like I said, you could, you could get rid of all five commissioners at once.
But you can have two years and still have them not, yeah, still staggered. It doesn't have to, like, they are not.
Well.
How would you stagger with two years?
Yeah, you can't stagger with two years.
I just, like, let's assume that we go out and I get elected again and I say, cool, I'll keep one of the city council members or city planners, there you go.
That's what I'm saying, we're starting at ground zero, though, going to two years.
But we're not.
He's saying eventually it will be.
Right, and all you could.
They're stay staggered, why would they have to go back to?
We have elections every two years.
It it's only going to work with the with the four-year scenario that way if the ones who, i- if if the. Well, there's two ways it can work, one is that if the mayor picks up um. One of the commissioners with this, if the mayor picks up one of the commissioners with a two-year term.
Right.
Okay, and so the mayor doesn't reappoint the first cycle, or if the two commission or the two council members who are. Um, who are not up for reelection this year. Um inherit the two planning commissioners left over.
Right.
That the ones newly elected would appoint, the ones not newly elected would inherit for two more years.
Yes.
The planning commissioner, um and then the mayor would appoint every two years. It would, it can work that way, but the 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 stagger on the commission has to be the same as the stagger on the council.
Yeah.
Which are four-year terms, right? If you're gonna go four-year terms, then. And you're gonna keep the ones who are on there now without having to reappoint them.
So you're saying keep it four-year terms?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying if if that's what you want to do, you, the way, the 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 way to make it work so you don't have a problem down the road is for. The two council members being elected this year, or reelected this year, elected this year. Would appoint their planning commissioners, the council members who were reelected or who were elected two years ago. Would inherit the remaining two commissioners here for the rest of their first term, and then they would get to a point at the beginning of the following term.
At at the beginning of the following.
City council term.
So wait, say, wait, 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 hold on, so are their terms, the the remaining two city councils are planning. Commissioners, are they, are they concurrent with our city terms, city councilman terms?
Yeah, the planning commissioners are appointed by the city council immediately after the election, so their terms are essentially the same.
Okay, so they would track them, and we would have the staggering. I'm okay with that. On two-year terms?
No, no, there there won't be two-year terms, it has to be four-year terms to maintain staggering. If you do two-year terms, every election, all five have to get reappointed. There is no way to. No, no, you can't.
Even though we staggered this.
Staggering, if I do two years and two years, that just means that everyone's on the same cycle. And like, if you do two-year terms, that means that in twenty twenty-four, we're doing this, and then in twenty twenty-six, all five are up, and then in twenty twenty-eight, all five are up.
That's what I was trying to say, at some point in time, you could get rid of the entire planning commission.
But, I mean, that's also to argue that if you're.
Playing devil's advocate, if I run for mayor, then I would, or if Alicia runs for mayor, if. Then it changes everything, or puts and changes, then you, you're you're taking it out of two and four-year deal.
Just.
You see what I'm saying, at one, some point in time, everybody could get.
I mean, by decree, can't we just say, we'll alternate to you two every other year?
Here's, here's what.
No, no, I mean, we have two-year terms, but we could elect half, and if in the interim, there would be a three-year oddity. But then we could have two, every two years, we could have.
We throw a little bit of a philosophical bent to this. Um, at any, because you have staggered terms, you're not gonna have a situation where all five council members change all at once. I mean, you could, in theory, two members who.
Highly unlikely.
It's highly unlikely. By the same token, if you've got five council members, um I'm sure that one of you is going to value. A planning commissioner with experience on the commission, planning commissioner applicant with experience on the commission. And would probably give them preference in appointment to someone without any experience, it's, it's, it's. There's no guarantee of that, and and it's entirely possible you wind up with commissioners with no experience that we, but that's happened here before, when the commission was first created. We had commissioners, I'm sure, with no experience, and it fell to the planning director to. Help them through that initial first year or two to get them up to speed and help them operate, it can be done. Um, it's, it's not pretty, um I'm not, I'm not sure what the likelihood that is that that could happen. Probably not much would be my guess, but um. We we can do that, otherwise, then we had, then we're back to the 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 staggered terms in four years, and then how do we, again, how do we address? Mid-cycle chair, mid midterm changes in in council members and appointments to commission and and that sort of thing, so.
May may I just ask for the sake of you and your experience? Have you worked for cities that have two-year term planning commissioners?
I don't currently work with cities that have two years, everybody that I work with has four at this point.
Okay, Scott, let's move this along.
I don't believe so.
Two or four? Lisa, two or four?
I really want to, cause I think.
Two or four. John, two or four?
Four.
David?
Two.
Four.
Hey, there's three.
Okay, moving right along, what was that last item you had?
Uh, how do we fill the current vacancy?
Um, I think that's been discussed, correct?
I think the idea was not.
Oh, that's current, oh, this current.
Yeah, the current vacancy.
The current vacancy, oh.
Do you not want to fill it? Do you want to fill it for four months? Do you want to fill it till the end of twenty twenty-six? But if you're going to two years, it would be only in.
Why don't we just wait till?
Let's fill that one for four years.
Uh, okay, everybody agree, leave it open till the election. John? Open till the election?
That's right.
David? David?
I don't think we're gonna get someone in time, so yeah, I guess we need to open.
Good, done. Moving right along.
Did we need to talk about his pay thing or do is that not?
That's all I've got here. I'm, I think we're done.
And the green team thing, the tree.
Oh, the tree, I I will bring that back as part of the purview document for the uh, the planning commission.
And are we gonna talk about raising pay at all?
So you can put that in this document or that was not agenda.
What's what's that?
Raising the pay of the.
No, like, I can't put it in the document. It it it's something that would have to come back as a separate order, but you can direct me to do that.
I'm gonna direct you to do that, bring that back.
Okay.
Talk about that offline.
Yes.
Settle science? Okay. Moving on. Number twelve, consideration of a fourth amendment to the city manager employment agreement and discussion of salary adjustment to city manager fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. And this will be our city attorney.
The agenda says Greg, but my name is Stephanie, I'm filling in for Greg tonight. So before you, we do have that fourth amendment to the city manager employment agreement. Um, right now, we are gonna look for the discussion on the salary adjustment that is proposed in the fourth amendment. Um, so as currently written, um, the adjustment does include a COLA increase. In addition to the COLA is an application of a five percent merit increase. Addition of a provision which precludes termination without cause for a period of a hundred and twenty days following the change of a mayor or city council member. Or during any period where there are two vacancies on the city council. And we also have one final provision that permits the city manager. When faced with termination without cause to choose to retire in lieu of receiving a contractual six month severance payment. So what is presented in the staff report includes all of those terms. Um, so if. The council is amenable to those terms as presented, we would just need approval of the agreement and authority for a city ma- or for the mayor to execute the. The amendment.
Okay, uh, any questions for staff? Lisa? John? No. Any public comments?
No.
I will close public comments and bring it back to council for further discussion or a possible motion.
I move to approve.
Second. Linda.
Okay, um, see, uh, council member Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
House Member Hornick.
Aye.
It's Member Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye.
All right, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, couple brief items, just some reminders of some upcoming events. Uh, the first event is the uh, the Saul Bang July Fourth Parade this week. It's not, or next week on July fourth at uh. Eleven AM, it is not in the city of Boulton, but it is something that some of our city council members will be taking part in. Um, so. I'll get you all details as to when and where to meet, but for anyone who wants to come out and support your city council members at this parade. Uh, July fourth, eleven AM in Saulane. What's that?
Are you all riding mokis again?
Uh, some of us.
Some of us.
Um. The second one is a an upcoming event here in the city of Boulton, a Boulton barbecue bonanza. I forget what the, which annual event this is. But it has been going on for many years, July twenty seventh. Uh, from eleven o'clock to two o'clock. Each um. Address within the city of Boulton was mailed a save the date card, which was, which is also to serve as your. Ticket for entry, so we advise people when you get that in the mail, and I know mine has arrived already, I think it arrived last week. Do not throw them away, hang on to them because you'll probably need them for.
Yeah, we just have people show ideas, they don't have.
We'll, we'll come up with a situation for that with with a, but it's a whole lot easier to administer a whole lot of people if they just walk in carrying the card, so.
What if your city council member might have accidentally thrown it away while she was rage cleaning?
We we will have a, we will have a mechanism for making sure that that gets taken care of, but it's easier if everyone brings their card, okay?
Sorry.
So that I'll, I'll conclude my remarks here. I think you've heard enough from me tonight.
Thank you.
I wanna know if we're gonna see uh fellow city council members behind the lines again this year. I had quite a good time. Seeing you all sweating, cooking some dogs.
Harassing us, yes.
I'm gonna bring my own easy up next time.
Okay, meetings are. Until July eleven.